The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida sunshine law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meeting and its work. In compliance with the sunshine law, the board has adopted uniformed meeting procedures, which include the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment with regard to any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call the speaker's name in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last name. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the sunshine law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you.
We'll now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
Good morning, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. Just have two brief updates. I'm going to go ahead and ask for Mr. Vianello and some of the members of our staff to come forward at the table. We're going to provide two updates before we begin our agenda items. One will be first, the technology and scheduling committee updates from previous meetings, and then we will follow that with Mr. Vianello and Mr. McGowan providing an update on Sanford Harmony.
Thank you, Dr. Gall, and good morning Reverend Chair and board members. So as a reminder, we pulled together two committees to address and to problem solve MCPS online issues that have emerged over the first seven weeks of school. And so as Dr. Gall had mentioned, this morning, we're going to provide very brief updates on our committee work. The first, you'll hear from our technology committee, which we broke down into two subgroups. We had the assessment committee, which was chaired by Mr. McGowan. Then we had the technology issues, which were identified by the survey that we sent out, and that was chaired by Dr. Shafdi and Mr. Carrillo. And then you'll hear from Mr. Whitehouse, who reconvened our reopening schools scheduling committee, and that group addressed issues surrounding unsuccessful students with MCPS online. So from all groups, you'll hear some quick fixes. You'll hear some things that we can immediately do, that we have already started, and then you'll hear some things that are going to take a little bit longer for us to have full implementation on. So with that said, I will turn it over to Mr. McGowan, and we'll get started.
Good morning, everyone. So the assessment committee had really four specific tasks ahead of us, and I appreciate the committee work. They did a fantastic job in coming to some recommendations. The first two, I would deem as short-term solutions of Mr. Vianello mentioned, some immediate fixes that we can put into place. Both of those are in regards to a couple of our assessment programs. So one is our elementary demand writing assessment for our third through fifth graders. It was determined by the committee that for quarter two, which will be actually in about a week for that demand writing assessment, that will be typed by our MCPS online students at home, not handwritten. But then the third quarter, which will be early next semester, will be handwritten. Part of the goal of the demand writing assessment is to mimic, if you will, the FSA writing assessment students will take. That must be handwritten, not typed, for our elementary age students. And so they wanted to provide flexibility currently for our MCPS online students to type it, but for the last administration to do it handwritten, to again, give them more practice there. Second is bringing students back, our MCPS online students, back on campus to do testing instead of taking it at home. And so that was the recommendation from the group for beginning and second semesters, so our quarter two QSMAs, iReady AP2, to require students to come back to campus to take that rather than taking it at home. Our next step there is meeting with Mr. Leffert and Ms. Roer from Transportation Monday to begin discussion of logistics. But in terms of being able to administer the assessment on campus, of course, that's what we've always done, so that'll be an easy transition for not only us, but for our schools. Long-term may not be the right choice of words here, but these are not immediate fixes. Will take a little bit more time. One is on attendance for our MCPS online students. The recommendation was for the development of clear expectations of what that looks like and how to observe that and to enforce that. And so our next step will be our student services managers, you know, creating procedures and implementing the recommendations from the committee for that. Finally, in regards to VAM and student achievement calculations for our MCPS online teachers, the recommendation was looking for some flexibility for our online teachers with everything going on this year. That was the recommendation, was to develop a new scale to calculate summative calculations for our teachers. So again, that will have to be something, the next step will be for district staff to begin looking at that and adjusting the scale, but that was the recommendation from the committee to provide that flexibility.
And if I, John, if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in, and then just to clarify, the recommendation was to look at a flexible scale for all employees, not just the MCPS online teachers.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you.
Good morning. So our committee addressed some technology-driven topics. They were related to Canvas, the learning management system, disabling the chat feature in Microsoft Teams, teachers being able to switch platforms, and Google Meet and Zoom purchases by the district. So the majority of our topics were very immediate fixes. Yesterday, the area directors communicated with principals that teachers absolutely can make a one-time switch between platforms, whether that be moving from Microsoft Teams to Google Classroom, or Google Classroom to Microsoft Teams. We do ask that it is a one-time switch, so we maintain that instructional momentum. Today, we also have some, today's District in Service Day, and we offered Google Classroom training and Microsoft Teams training. As of last night, we have 154 participants in the Microsoft Teams training and 28 participants in the Google Classroom sessions. We had a waitlist due to the way the courses are built, but as of last night, everyone on the waitlist, we were able to admit them into the course. The second piece of disabling the chat in Microsoft Teams, we found some very varied opinions on that, and we learned that schools have the ability to make the decision at a campus level if they choose to disable that feature. So yesterday as well, the area directors communicated with our principals to allow that to be a school-based decision versus a one-size-fits-all. We either keep it on or we disable it. And then the very last recommendation, that is an immediate fixes, we brought to the table should the district purchase upgraded licenses for security for Google Meet and Zoom. And the committee was unanimous that they did not wish to proceed in that direction, and that will culminate a little bit with what I'm going to explain with Canvas. So the Canvas demonstration was tailored to our committee. The task force members were able to submit questions prior to the demonstration, and the representative addressed the questions in real time in the demonstration. The demonstration also ended with a Q&amp;A session. So any questions that they had that were not answered by the demonstration, they were immediately able to ask the Canvas representative. The representative mentioned that the default video conferencing tool is now Microsoft Teams in Canvas. So the committee of students and teachers said, if that is the direction that we're going, which was the recommendation of the committee, let's remain consistent, so we're not engaging in a continuous learning curve of, here's Zoom, here's Google Meet, now we transition potentially to Canvas, and that's a new learning curve. So they factored in quite a few perspectives. We had students, and we had parents, and we had community members, and they really did a wonderful job listening to perspectives and coming to a consensus. The recommendation for Canvas is for implementation at the start of next school year. They almost asked for a whole harmless period beginning in January where they could practice. They know that training is critical, but they did not want training to be mandatory for implementation January of this school year. They wanted some time to interact with the platform and then have a mandatory rollout at the beginning of next school year. They also proposed possibly pilot schools, so that we could customize it and work with maybe an elementary, a middle, and a high school to understand the dynamics of such a massive implementation. And then based on the experiences of teachers at that school site, we could come up with a customized implementation plan that is not cookie cutter to the platform, but special for Marion County.
A question. So are y'all planning on continuing online indefinitely? Like next year? The scheduling committee?
So that's actually coming up in the scheduling committee, and that's still part of our online.
Even when this whole COVID thing is over, we're going to continue with online?
Yeah, well, that's going to depend, but that's part of what we're recommending with the scheduling committee, isn't it?
Interesting.
I got a question, too. Now, you were talking about the video feature, not using Zoom and using the, I guess, the video feature in Canvas. Is that what I heard?
Canvas has the video conferencing tool built in. They shared with us that they use something called Big Blue Button. And the day our task force met was a Wednesday, and the representative shared with us that Big Blue Button would fall behind the scenes, and the primary video conferencing feature in Canvas moving forward would be Teams.
So if we just said a few seconds ago that we're giving the teachers the options to use Teams or Classroom, this forces them to Teams.
For video conferencing.
Right.
But they can still.
Ms. Whitehouse, you was shaking your head. No, what did that mean?
Also, again, Canvas is really a learning management system. So it's a platform where we can house information, similar to our teacher websites that we have now. So you could still operate other programs and use Canvas as the landing page where all students start, then branch out to whether it's a Google Classroom or a Microsoft Team. So I don't want you to think that Canvas just becomes this whole new entity and everything else goes away.
No, I'm just thinking about the video portion, because you're saying that if for them to use, for a teacher to be able to use the video, they would have to use Teams.
That feature in Teams.
That explains why there's so many teachers looking to train for Teams then, because it looks like they're going to be required to understand.
Right, so then they really don't have.
They don't really have an option.
They really don't have an option. That's what I'm saying. If the teacher's going to use the video option, they want to use video, they really don't have an option between Classroom and Teams, because they need to use Teams to do the video, correct?
They'll have to use Teams for the video conferencing piece, but the way that they deliver assignments and load their assignments, they do have choice whether they house those in Teams and they use discussion boards, or they use the features in Google Classroom.
I just want us to be clear. I want us to, I don't want this to be cloudy for teachers to understand what we're saying. So they kind of have an option, but they really don't have an option.
This is how bureaucracies get you to do what they want you to do, period.
I just wanted to be clear for them. Go ahead, let's go.
You know, they've worked really hard, and these committees have worked really hard. I think then it's up to administration at the different schools to have the communication. But if the committee has gone through and looked at Canvas and looked at all the other platforms, and they're recommending that, we need to abide by what they're saying, and then it's up to administration to make it clear through the schools. And what I'm hearing is, other than the video conferencing, if they choose to use Google Classroom, they can. So that's one component.
I'm hearing the same thing. I just want it to be clear, because we'll get 1,000 questions saying that.
Well, we shouldn't be getting the questions.
Right.
It should be directed, we need people to understand that, they need to follow the chain of command when they have questions, and the first chain of command is not to come to the school board.
Then I don't know what our job is for. I don't think we need to be here. Why don't we just put all them up here, and then we just go home? Save the district a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, probably.
I just want, I just wanted to be crystal clear for the staff to know this.
We did ask that question, sir, and they said that even though Teams would be the default feature, Big Blue Button would still be a viable option if they chose to use that when we do transition to Canvas. It's just that if they click the video conference, it will automatically populate to Teams.
It's going to go to Teams, okay.
But that's not to say that Big Blue Button would not be an option if they find that to be easier.
Right, and that we are completely moving away from the Zoom platform, correct?
We're moving away, they did not recommend that the district purchase a enterprise or a business Zoom account.
And I get that, because that Zoom is easily hacked.
That's what they, our ESE teachers, that any type of IEP or meeting would not be supported in Zoom.
Correct, so I fully support that. Okay.
I feel like what I'm hearing is, is that this is, technology is very complicated. It continues to evolve, because the technology was never really designed to serve school districts as a teaching tool in the way we're talking about implementing it. You know, when I think of Florida Virtual, when I think of Marion Virtual, those are two completely different ways of delivering instruction compared to what we're trying to do. My understanding is Florida Virtual, Marion Virtual, it's not synchronous instruction. You know, they're videos that kids watch, and then the kid, there's just a lot more responsibility on the kids and on the families, you know, to follow up and so on. We're talking about teacher, live teacher-led driven instruction, and how to best deliver that, knowing that we're going to have turnover of employees as well, and evolution of the technology as well. And the feedback that I've been getting is that Microsoft Teams is quite complex. I mean, when you're trying to problem solve it and learn it, the details of it are complex. So my ask is that, I acknowledge the hard work you guys have put in. It's amazing what you do on a daily basis and your knowledge base, and I don't pretend to know what you know. That's why you have the jobs that you have. But my ask is, as we continue to move forward, to try to keep it as simple as possible, because that's what helps our families, that's what helps our kids, that's what's going to help our newly hired teachers come up the curve quickly. And so if we can always have that in our minds, along, of course, with high-quality delivery that is reliable, we'll be on the right track. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
I'm excited about the, I mean, the look to the future of the online and that sort of thing for parents, but.
I don't think this is going away.
No, but here's what's going to be interesting. When they do the testing, it looks like they are going to do FSA testing. It will be very interesting to see how brick-and-mortar kids compared in testing to the online kids. So that's a good thing that we're postponing things until next year, when that data comes in, to see whether, are we in the business of education? Are we in the business of technology? You know, where are the kids going to be best served? So I guess I'm no longer, I'm no longer opposed to FSA testing. I think that that's going to be probably eye-opening, to see exactly where the parents, where the students were best served. So I am no longer opposed to that. Now that I see that we are looking to continue online, I think the FSA will be a great screenshot in the spring to see which way the students are learning the best. Thank you.
Stacy, that's, I think, a perfect segue into Mr. Whitehouse and his subcommittee, but I would like to just say one other thing on Canvas and remind the board that this is the second committee that has recommended Canvas. We had our reopening team during the summer come together, and it was clear from them that we need a learning management system more enhanced than what we currently have.
And I am, I am not opposed to Canvas at all, what I'm, because I think we need to get onto one thing and do it, and do it well. But I am happy for the teachers who are boots on the ground, because none of these people are in that classroom dealing with the issues that these teachers are dealing with. And so it's easy to speak when you're not in their shoes. So I'm glad that we're holding back in January, not forcing them onto another platform and waiting until the fall, to see how, actually how online, how successful is online learning? And if it's super exciting and it's super successful, then Canvas will be, you know, that'll be the best way to go. I would agree 100% that we need to all get on the same page, but we're not on the same page now. To ask the teachers to get on the same page every three months with something new, I'm happy that y'all postponed it until fall.
And board members, Stacy, I think to what Dr. Shafdi shared, the piloting is really important, and the opportunity for people to get comfortable with it and have the time to interact with it in a more casual basis is really important. Yes.
And I know the teacher would be quite relieved to know that.
All right, good morning, board members. So as Mr. Vianello mentioned, we reconvened the scheduling committee last week from the summer to examine some of the challenges that we're having with our students online. When we looked at our current data as it stands for online students, what we saw was a very strong contrast between students who were very successful online and students who were very, very unsuccessful online. There wasn't a whole lot of middle ground. And so obviously, our committee's concern was the students who are very unsuccessful right now, because we're now nine weeks through this school year. We don't want to continue those students struggling and getting further behind and risking failing an entire semester. So what our committee has recommended is that, starting this second quarter, we would like to require students who are unsuccessful in MCPS online to return to traditional. So only looking at those students who are unsuccessful. The criteria that we discussed as a committee was, one, looking at students who are earning less than a C in core subject areas, so not electives, but core subject areas earning less than a C. Multiple unexcused absences or tardy's early checkouts, which we do have students that will start MCPS online in the morning and then disappear and not come back in the afternoon. So that's obviously a concern beyond students who just don't show up for the entire day. Discipline concerns that we would have for students that are attending the online school, and of course, technology. And we have, you know, families that are on their second and third hotspot that are still not able to connect on a regular basis. So those criteria would all be taken into consideration by the school. So our process that we would like to look at for change of placement is a tiered approach. So not simply flipping the switch this weekend and saying, anyone with less than a C is coming back starting Monday. That's not how we want to approach this. We want to really start with a looking at our students who are struggling the most. So looking at our students who are failing all subject areas, and we need to target them first and get them back into our classrooms. And then slowly working back through a tiered system to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our learners and getting as many of them back on our campus that are unsuccessful as we can this second nine weeks. We would utilize our multidisciplinary teams, which are already established on our campuses, to examine students and to problem solve around students who are unsuccessful in any setting. So using those teams to look at each student individually, reach out to the families and notify the parents, especially for the ones that we need to get back soon rather than later, and then continuing that process throughout the second nine weeks, because it's potential that a student was successful first nine weeks and then doesn't succeed while the second nine weeks. So we would want to continue that process of making sure that we're examining those students based on those criteria, and then making any necessary recommendations to students to return based on that. So we will certainly have to keep our eye on scheduling, because we know that if this is the process we take, there will be a large number of students returning back in person, which certainly presents scheduling challenges. So we will continue to work with our schools on looking at creative solutions to make sure that we're still able to operate safe campuses and not overcrowd our in-person classrooms. So that's going to require, obviously, some patience on our family side as well, as we will have to do some rescheduling, combining of classes, shifting around. We may even have to explore a little bit more of what we've done sporadically, which is combining between schools, some of our classrooms if we need to, especially for some of our advanced-level courses that tend to have lower enrollments. So this will be something that we'll work with school by school on a case-by-case basis as we look at their numbers for what's returning. So as Stacy mentioned before, we've looked at the second semester. At this point, we're not ready to make any type of recommendation to adjust what we're doing beyond simply bringing back our students who are not successful. We certainly need to pay attention to the numbers of students that will remain online and how we can successfully operate those online schools if they become very small. So we'll monitor that as a committee, and if we feel we need to make any further recommendations, we will certainly bring that back to the board.
I have a question. So if we have students that are doing well online but are choosing to come back to brick-and-mortar, how are we handling those?
So those students have already, most of them have already contacted the school. I know the principals were sending out messages to the families, asking if they would like to return starting second quarter, they may. And so we have a number of students who are being rescheduled over the weekend for their choice to return back second nine weeks.
What about our IB AP where the courses are a little bit low? Are they supposed to be able to return if they choose to?
Yes, yes, they certainly can return if they choose to, and again, we are readjusting schedules on a number of our campuses to accommodate for the return of poor students, and we'll continue to do so as those numbers fluctuate.
So just be aware that there are some scheduling problems, I think, maybe at Gambard, and some may not be able, are being told they can't return because classes are too large that have requested to return.
All right, Ms. Thor, I'm going to let you say something. You're right, Ms. McCall, and I know this personally, because it's at my house, and they were, the staff was very good on getting them back in. They did tell us kind of wait a few hours till they could try to work out the scheduling, but the staff over there with those IB programs are working it out. It may be that, they may say not come Monday, come Tuesday or something, just to work it out, but they have, they have been able to work it out.
We just need to check and be sure that if students want to return, we have the ability to get them to return.
And I was concerned about that IB part and those smaller avid and all those, would they have to collapse any classes or anything like that from online to?
Yes, that's the only way we're going to be able to accommodate, bring back a large number of students if we're requiring students to come back, is we will have to collapse online sections, which means we'll merge classes together. In likelihood, you may or may not have the same teacher, just depends on what that looks like. We always try to keep them with the same teacher as much as humanly possible, but it's not always a possibility as we start really shifting units and sections around mid-year.
And sorry, members of the board, I wanted to say that the plan is that to have an agenda item November 5th, so that we can provide the specifics then of what it looks like for second semester, so everyone will know publicly what they can anticipate. We're working through, as Mr. Whitehouse shared, the details and what the numbers are and staffing and all of that that takes a little bit of time, but the plan is to bring that back November 5th for second semester, so that people can plan ahead.
And possibly a, just an update on how it's working, bringing those unsuccessful students back in, what type of class interruptions is it causing, and just so we have a heads-up of that.
Ms. Thor.
Thank you. Yes, everything that you're sharing, it just, it sounds to me, what it comes down to is online is a placement, just like classroom is a placement, you know? And if they're not being successful in their current placement, then we need to be mirroring what we are currently doing on campus, having the team get together, and it shouldn't be a surprise to parents whose kids are being unsuccessful at this point. You know, there's been a lot of outreach to the community and to families to try to get the hotspots going, thanks to, you know, your efforts, Chair Cummings and others. So this, you know, I hope the community understands that this is a continued flexible process, and the big elephant in the room is, we don't know what's going to happen, you know, with the virus. Are we going to continue doing the great job that we're doing to suppress it and keeping people out of the hospital and all of that? Or are we going to see our numbers go up? It's distressing to me now how they've reclassified the whole 15 minutes of exposure thing. It's distressing to me now how they've reclassified the whole 15 minutes of exposure thing. Because I'm, yeah, I'm sure.
And the CDC just did a perpetual one just now.
Yes, they did. And so in terms of perpetual disruption, you know, that was a hit for us because we were doing just fine, thank you very much, when things considered. And so now we have these new guidelines that we're obligated to follow. But, and I agree with you, Ms. Stacy, I think that we do need to test for FSA. I think we're going to need a lot of grace from the state and a lot of areas. But that's the only way we're going to get out from under, you know, the situation at Evergreen. Those kids need the opportunity to test and show their stuff so that we're not having to pay for that again next year. So that makes it even more urgent to get the kids that are in the current placement of MCPS Online and aren't successful, you know, back in brick and mortar and working with them. I represent Vanguard and I know that they have been really, really proactive in planning for those kids that have to have unique schedules, that have to have unique classes, really thinking outside the box. You know, there are some kids that are coming on campus for courses, some that are taking other classes, you know, online and everything in between. I mean, IB is a pretty cherished program here in Marion County, so they're taking care of the kids. So again, you know, thank you. There is so much to this, so much to this.
I'm unsure.
Which was Ms. King or Ms. Stacy?
It's Ms. Stacy first, but I have something. The good news is this morning, as I followed the COVID, I can't, my glasses fog up when I breathe through this. I'm sorry, y'all, I can't do this. I clicked on the state websites for something that I found very interesting. On August the 24th, when a million kids basically in Florida went back to school, two-thirds of our students kind of went back to school around August the 24th. That's kind of a number that a lot of us would agree with. The COVID positives that day were 2,258. I looked at the COVID positives yesterday in the state of Florida, it was 2,144. Therefore, it looks like the kids returning to school, probably the students that are coming positive with COVID would have if they were out on the playground in the park somewhere anyway. So for the parents that are still worried about this, the data, everybody likes to talk about the science and the data, the numbers don't show it. I clicked on it, made a screenshot of it for anybody that wants to see it. Our numbers have gone down since a million kids went to school. So I think the teachers are doing a better job than the families were doing, is my point, okay? I think we're doing a better job. I get after everybody when I don't agree with you, but I agree, but when I agree with you, I'll praise you. That's just my personality and everybody knows it's my genetics, okay? So the fact is, parents online, your kids are probably less likely to get COVID in our schools than they are grouping with your friends and families in your little group meetings that y'all are doing on the playgrounds while your kids are online. Because the fact is, numbers are down a few hundred positives now over what they were before a million kids went to school. So that's good news for y'all because y'all are keeping our kids safer than if they were at home. Thank you.
Ms. King.
When you were discussing bringing our students back, what came to my mind, because I can see the students and maybe even the classroom teacher being overwhelmed because there's going to be a very large gap between last March and, you know, the end of October versus the students that may have been in the classroom since August. Do we have plans put in place, you know, so we're, when the students are returned, we do have those plans in place and thinking forward how we're going to best serve our students that need it?
Certainly, yes. So a lot of it depends on the numbers because our numbers are going to be fairly large at some of our schools and we may actually be able to just take the same class that was online and flip them to in-person in some situations. And so in that case, the teacher would already have the understanding of what those students' abilities were and were not and could move forward.
Are we, are we providing extra support for them though? Because we know that if you have, you know, students that, you know, may have that large gap, they're going to need more support than the other classroom that has kind of been trucking along. So I'm just curious, are we thinking, are you guys thinking ahead like that to offer that support so they're not overwhelmed and stuff like that?
Absolutely. And our intervention process that we use in schools is very fluid. So we don't simply place a child one way and then they stay there all year. We monitor throughout the year and if adjustments are needed, based on what we're seeing and what the data is showing us from their academic performance, we'll make fluid adjustments throughout the school year. So certainly, we will monitor those students and make sure that we have appropriate placements and appropriate interventions matched for them.
Okay, and support for the teachers to help best serve, okay, that's fun. Okay, thank you.
And I have one more question, thinking about the kids that are out because they've been quarantined now that the CDC has changed that guideline. Knowing that there'll be kids coming back into the classroom, how are we supporting the teachers and those students who need that extra instruction that are out for two weeks? And because they're not MCPS Online, but they're out for two weeks, they may miss some instruction. And I'm thinking as much about high school and middle school kids. How are we addressing that so they don't get behind in those two weeks that they're out? That quarantine time? So I am concerned about that.
So the process we've used has really been dependent on the students. So in many cases, we are able to move those students to an MCPS Online course and allow them to attend that course until they return. In some cases, the families elect just to treat it like a normal, I'm out sick and I'm going to make up the work. The vast majority of our teachers have gotten very good about keeping all their assignments and updated resources online because we've had such a heavy push towards either teams or classroom and so many of our students have at least some online sections. They're very good about keeping those assignments in there. So when students are out, they can still access daily the same work that those students are getting within the classroom. Many of our teachers are doing flip classrooms where they're recording what's going on in the classroom, recording lectures that students can then watch. And so there is access, but certainly if a student is struggling, we will try to intervene while they're out and provide some additional support.
You know, that's one of the benefits of this is that teachers recording their lessons, that's just helpful. I guess any student could then pull it up later to look at what they might have missed and to help study. So, you know, from crisis comes creativity and some good new thinking.
And I'm really thinking of our high school.
Yes.
Because you know, that two-week period of time, there's a lot of instruction that goes on in that period. And if they're missing the instruction, they may have the assignments, but they may not know how to do them because they missed the instruction. And that's just, I want to be sure that we're supporting and it's a, I know it's a lot of extra work for our teachers. And but we just need to be sure that we're supporting all of our students.
Let me say this for, I want to thank you guys for what you're doing with trying to think outside the box to figure out a way to make sure that these students are being successful. The fact of the matter is, parents have to kind, have to look at their child's situation and see, is it going to be conducive for them to stay out or to come back? I think, looking at the criteria that you're giving, is, we're in the business of trying to make kids be successful. And to make them be successful and to help them be as successful as they can. And we know that some kids are not succeeding on the online format. So to give them the option of knowing that they probably need to come back as soon as possible to get them back into a mode to be successful, I thank you guys for putting that together. My thing is just to make sure that we let them know, we let everyone know that we're not taking away any options. Because the parent still has the right to do whatever they want to do. But we, I think as a district, we've done everything that we could do to mitigate and make the schools as safe as possible to bring these kids back. And I think that it's time to just have that tough conversation and say, hey, we need to get these kids back in front of face-to-face because we know that they're more successful when they are face-to-face. We do know that, so.
What I did hear is that if they are not successful with online, we're going to make it mandatory that they return.
Is it mandatory? Can you mandatory that?
Yes, we can make it mandatory because they can still do homeschool and do online Marion Virtual.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Let me ask the question.
Is that legal?
Are we making it mandatory? Wait a minute, hold on, let me, and I'm asking this question mandatory because of the order that came out from Corcoran. It said that there had to be options.
Correct.
So can you mandatory this? I'm asking.
So the recommendation from the committee was, yes, we would require those students who are unsuccessful to return or they could select homeschool or member.
Okay, okay, okay.
It provides two platforms for them to choose.
So that's, I just want the message to be clear.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I, I don't, I don't want there to be confusion with the message. I want the message to be clear.
Chairman Cummings, members of the board, absolutely. We have a responsibility to ensure that every child is thriving and is successful. And that is our, that is our duty and responsibility. So as Ms. Thor said, this is a placement. And so we still enable a choice. And the student study team, as would be typically in place regardless of the pandemic, still is the process with this. And so the student study team gathers the information and talks together collectively with the family as a team to say, here is the best option and here are the options.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just how, I just want it to be conveyed.
Yes, understood.
The right way.
Right. And that goes along with the fact that this shouldn't come as a surprise to these families because, you know, a couple unsung heroes that aren't sitting here right at the moment from your department, Ms. McGowan, are social workers, are psychologists, you know, that have continued to make home visits, that have continued to try to problem solve, you know, any of those issues. It's, it's really been a tremendous amount of outreach. Could there be more? Of course, there could always be more. But I appreciate your strong words, Mrs. Stacy. I think it was something that the community really needed to hear. You know, that if we're going to be responsible for their test scores and for their well-being, then we need to best position them to be successful.
While we have all the educators here, I wasn't going to say this until later, but while we have you guys that are in leadership and doing a, this is just like, no other, I can't imagine. As aggravated as I get, I would be so aggravated in your situation. I would just not cut out to do what you do because it would be so overwhelming to me. But I did, I have been doing my homework. I have been checking other districts, other health departments and finding out what's going on. Senator Perry's office has helped me just do some, do some research because they have access to the health directors all across the state. One thing I am finding out, and I did call to verify from the Health Department, from Mr. Myers, the head of the Health Department, the director of the Health Department in Elatua, if what, the information that I was given is correct, and he said it is. And this is how they're handling the 15-minute pieces that we're talking about because this guidance came down. He said, along with the CDC and the Health Department guidelines, you've got to throw in some common sense and you've got to figure out why you're here. You're here to educate kids. And my position is, teachers are, teachers are not time clock keepers, okay? So what his position was, was that on the 15 minutes, like if they pass one another in the bathroom or they pass one another in the cafeteria and they, you know, two minutes here, a minute there, he said, that's not, the science clearly says on the CDC website that brief encounters probably does not transmit this, okay? But if they're working together for like a five-minute period here and a 10-minute period there, well then maybe, that's not just a totally passing in the hallway type thing. And I said, so, so he told Senator Perry's office that if, and I called him, I wrote all my notes down and he verified, he said every bit of this to her. If a teacher does not know and they are, the teacher says, I don't know whether Nancy Stacy was palling around with this person, she's got COVID and I don't know if she talked to the kid that sits six feet from her, I don't know. I can't, I can't, I don't, I don't, I didn't keep the time chart on her. He said, we weigh in on the child's success side. If the teacher doesn't know, then we don't, we assume that it didn't happen, okay? Where in Marion County, we're assuming the opposite. We're assuming if the teacher doesn't know, then it probably happened, is what I was told. I don't know if that's still the case, but that is not what they're doing in Elatua, the Health Department. If the teacher doesn't know, well then he comes down on the side of education because that's what they're there for. So why throw them out of school and do that? I said, so, so he went on to say that the students in the classroom, say you do have a positive and there is just a bunch, it's elementary kids. He's talking mainly about elementary kids, not high school. Because high school kids, he said, the transmission at high school probably isn't happening at school. It's happening at football practice, it's happening when they have sleepovers and that sort of thing. It's really not probably even happening at school. So to keep up with what they're doing, the teachers don't know when they went from third class, third period to fourth period, they don't know who's together. The teacher can't answer that, only the kids can. And if they don't tell the truth, well then there you go. But at elementary level, he said, that what he suggests doing as the director of the Health Department, when there's a question in a classroom on whether the kids were exposed to that student, instead of sending them all home and closing the class, he recommends going in and doing a, with the parent's permission, on day three after the student tested positive, which means that he was already spreading before he tested positive. So on day three, he goes in and he'll say, I recommend testing the whole classroom, see if we've got any COVID because it pops up usually on day five or six commonly. So he'll test the whole classroom. He also recommends coming back on day nine and testing them again. What he also recommends is this, even though it says quarantine, he said, the Health Department directors are allowed to use discretion on following the science. He said, there's a quarantine of 14 days. He said, mm-mm, that if a kid was quarantined because of a possible contact to a classroom student, on day nine, he recommends a test for that student and for the students in the classroom. If those kids come back negative on day nine, he don't make them wait till day 14. He lets them come back to school. So they're doing things a lot different up there. And so he said, because the science shows that by nine, if you haven't contracted it, you're probably, you're not going to probably go to 14. And he said, so, he comes down on the side of education, not on the side of, well, he didn't say unicorns, but y'all know that's my word. Don't come down on the side of unicorns, comes down on the side of science, which shows that. And so he doesn't just leave the unicorns out there. He goes in, tests the classroom on day three after the positive student, tests them again on day nine before it gets out of control and checks for positives at that time. But what they're finding is they're not having a lot of spread, kid to kid, in our schools. So they are doing things different there and it would be great if our two Health Department directors got together and kind of talked about some of these options so that we aren't, if the teacher doesn't know, because she's not the timekeeper, whether these kids, and they shut the whole classroom down because the teacher doesn't know, he airs, he goes, why would you air on the negative side like that? That's going to hurt their education. He said, I air on the side of, if the teacher doesn't know, then it probably didn't happen because she's going to see these kids palling around together and she's the one that's going to know in her classroom by her gut feelings what was doing. But she can't say for sure because she's not a timekeeper. So anyway, it was really interesting. And I called Mr. Myers back, spoke to him on his cell phone. I received his cell phone number. And I went through all of the things that Senator Perry's office had told me. He goes, Ms. Stacy, that's exactly what we're doing in Elatua. So, and it's working for them. So anyway, wanted to give y'all a perspective of exactly, straight from the Health Department director's mouth, what he's doing down the road from us, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, team, for all that you guys are doing and are continuing to do. So we look forward to future briefings. Thank you. Any public comment? Any public comment? There being the...
And I would like to publicly thank our committee members. We had over 50 members participate on these two committees as well as our chairs. They did an outstanding job. To your point, Ms. Thor, they worked very hard, they did an outstanding job. And the process that they used to come to the recommendations that you heard today was first-class. It was outstanding. As Dr. Gall had mentioned, the second topic is to briefly touch on some issues surrounding Sanford-Harmony. And we heard at the last board meeting, a concern brought from a community member. And we heard the concern, the response from our school board. And so we want to act with a sense of urgency to address this issue. So I briefly want to share with you what our plan is. Mr. McGowan is here to help support that plan and he has a historical perspective if there are questions. The very next morning, I reached out to Mr. McGowan and Ms. Steckman and we talked... The very next morning, I reached out to Mr. McGowan and Ms. Steckman, and we talked about, let's get together a committee, a diverse group of parents, of teachers, of some district staff, to do two things. To look at the lessons between where we are now and the second semester. Go lesson by lesson. This committee will go lesson by lesson to ensure there's nothing inappropriate for our students to come across. The other thing this committee will do will be to look at the curriculum as a whole. This is our third year of implementing Sanford Harmony. So is there a better curriculum that we can be using at this time? So the committee will first address the lessons, and then they'll get to the larger question of, is this still the best committee? And we'll have that done by the end of, by the end of this first semester. In the meantime, while we're looking, while this committee will convene, which will be next Thursday, will be their first meeting, while we're waiting for the committee to start to review those lessons, we've asked our program specialists in elementary education to start looking at lesson by lesson, each grade level, each lesson, to make sure that before the committee convenes, that we're not missing anything that might be inappropriate for our students. So that process is taking place. Next Thursday, the committee will be pulled together, and then we'll do those two things. Continue to review the committee for their lessons, but also look at, is there a better curriculum for our district to use?
Thank you. I have a question.
No, I do too.
In particular to that one lesson that the parent brought forth, have we sent out anything about that, that one particular lesson that was, that is an issue? And have we sent something across the district to pull that lesson or anything like that?
It's too late.
Have they all, have they all done it? Have they all took that lesson?
Yeah, and I'm getting ready to explain that as soon as you guys are finished, because actually I was going to bring this up for, at the end, and my concerns, but since it's been brought up, I, I've done a little bit of research on this program too, and it is too late. And the reason why it is too late is because Marion County Public Schools has something that we call curriculum maps. And so I'm going to give you guys curriculum maps from kindergarten through, it's okay, I've already looked at it, if I don't, I got one here. Kindergarten through fifth grade. So what has happened is Sanford Harmony has been embedded into our social studies curriculum. So if you look at kindergarten, and you probably, you guys aren't familiar because you are probably not educators, and it's been a while, and I even had to familiarize myself with it. But I looked, and what happens is, these maps will tell a teacher basically what they're to instruct and when. And Sanford Harmony has its own column, and the first 10 days of every grade level from kindergarten to fifth grade was taught Sanford Harmony as their social studies curriculum. Since then, they've been instructed twice a week on this program. Social studies has, well, what I consider social studies, probably what we know it as, like, you know, places, regions, or, you know, whatever, is taught three times a week, to where this program, Sanford Harmony, is only, is instructed twice. I did write something, and I think I'll just read it because it's just interesting. But what I'm going to say is, as stated by Mr. Buchanan last week, Marion County Public Schools has approved, we as a board, because I researched that too, we approved Sanford Harmony program. He did give us a glimpse of what the program entails, and so I did request and took a look at these curriculum maps and did my own homework. And I explained to you guys also, you know, the first 10 days, what was instructed and what has been instructed since using these programs. And I quickly realized that we have a social emotional learning program in our core, and I'm, is social studies core curriculum or subject? Because I know Mr. Whitehouse, so it's core. So we have Sanford Harmony curriculum in our core curriculum on our maps. And we, as a board, and I'll admit that, we did not do our due diligence on this program. It is my understanding that we do have to have some strategies or programs for our risk students. And I will also provide, you know, we have Senate Bill 7030, which is the implementation of legislation, excuse me, legislative recommendations, our Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission. So I want to pass these out because I'm curious if what I'm reading is different than what is intended, and I am going to ask maybe for a legal opinion from Ms. Green, because, and I'll give you one too, because I outlined them. And what I read, it says, require a district plan to be focused on a multi-tiered system of supports to deliver evidence-based mental health assessment, diagnosis, intervention, treatment, and recovery services to students with one, one or more co-occurring substance abuse, and it goes on to say. That did not say that every student in our district has to be receiving this, and then there's also some other language that maybe Ms. Green can look at. And with that being said, the reason why I brought this up is because I would like to see Sanford Harmony halted in our schools and not be in our core curriculum until we can do our due diligence and make sure we have the best fit. And as Mr. Viennello said, like, he mentioned, like, we'll have teachers and maybe parents, but the teachers have already instructed this, and there's things that have been taught to our children that cannot be reversed. And another example is, a first grader, a first grade class was asked to make a video, videos, and tell what they don't, what the parent does that they don't like. Imagine being six or seven years old and making a video, and you go home and tell your parents that. So this is here, it's in our district, I want to see if we can legally do that. If not, we need a sense of urgency, we have, you know, so that's my research, I wanted to share that. I don't know what or if there's anything we can do, I have a sense of urgency on this. My other concern is the people that will be vetting this are the people that vetted it the first time, and it came before this board. And so that concerns me also. So I, that's my thoughts on this, I wanted to share this with you guys, and hopefully, I don't know where you guys stand, or what Ms. Green may suggest, or if you can, I know it's just...
Ms. King, if this is, as you've given to us, and this stuff is embedded in here, and we can't pull it back, we need to do, we do need to make this, have a sense of urgency with this. To basically, as the example you gave, to basically ask a kid to spy on their household is not good.
That's kind of like Nazi Germany to me.
And we need to be proactive, we don't need to, we've already heard what happened with the, with the parent that came forth, so I'm interested to see where everybody else is on this.
I'm right with Ms. King. This bullet, there's absolutely, I don't think we need to have the same people that implemented it go back and say it wasn't good.
No, the thing is, and as Ms. King said, the legality, how can we pull it, can we pull it?
Well, that's why we're going to ask Ms. King, because the way I read it, I don't see that every one of our students would need to have this in their social studies program, or, you know, and so that's why I think we need to legalize to look at this Senate bill and see if we can stop it. And if we can't, we need, again, we have a sense of urgency to do, right? Because the minds of children are the most precious, and they're moldable and reforming. And there is no room in Marion County Public Schools to take the role of a parent and their values and their beliefs. And that is exactly what is happening with this program. And it's not necessarily blatant and out there for you to see it, it sneaks in in different ways. So that's, I think our children...
Thank God for that parent that came in and spoke up, because our children obviously aren't talking to our kids, our children, it's so subtle, Ms. King, and so blended in, that our students don't consider it as an important issue to bring to them. But to take adult political issues and embed them in our social studies program for five-year-olds? I honestly am shocked that this is the third year we've done this, and that no one's come forward. I don't know if that parent was on an online, you know, that he followed through on it, but Ms. King, you always amaze me with your understanding of education and your research that you do, because, and Nancy, you're the same way. Because someone with my background, Mr. Cummings' background, wouldn't have even known how to track the rabbit to its hole, okay? Because I wouldn't know where to start, because that's not my understanding. Ms. King, this community owes you a huge thank you. I agree 100% with her. There is absolutely no reason to continue this. If the school board attorney says, this is the group of students that we need to reach, I think we need to put it in her hands to look at the legislation and to come back and give us her interpretation, and then of course, we take it from there. But this is one for you.
I just want to make that to be clear, I understand the direction, and I'll get the material from you when we're done, Ms. King. But right now, there's no direction to staff. You're going to wait on the legal opinion first.
Well, we need to wait on that. But what has happened, it snuck in, because you mentioned it was three years ago. Well, it came in, and it really wasn't used, but it was in our system, and so we really weren't aware of it. But now, this year, it's already here, we hear, you know, a free program, it's here. And so, again, and I'm not placing blame on anybody, and this board is just as responsible because we did not do our due diligence to review what was, you know, placed before us, and...
Because we make assumptions that no one would do this to children in the education system. We make that assumption. And that's a good assumption, that our educators are good guys, but it takes one apple to spoil the whole bunch, and to come up with a curriculum like this.
And not to make excuses, we missed it, but not only did we miss it, the state missed it, because they recommended it.
Yeah.
And so just, and that tells me something, that just because the state recommends something doesn't mean that we don't, that we don't need to still review it and go through it ourselves.
And that's every, it's all curriculum that comes before us, you know?
Yeah.
But this was a little bit different, because usually there is a process, like, you know, if, you know, if language or something, or math books change, there's that whole process. That did not necessarily, I don't think that's what happened here. I think there was Student Services Team, you know, they vetted it, there wasn't any type of documentation that we could find, and, I mean, I think I was presented with what they may have used and talked about, but there wasn't really a formal vetting process. I don't think that was used unless I'm wrong on that.
And for it to pursue so much of our core curriculum.
Well, that's what, that's what I find interesting, how it ended.
To take on almost half of our core curriculum.
Ms. Thoreau?
I did a lot of digging as well, and pulled the curriculum maps and so on, and I was aware that social skills, you know, training of which Sanford Harmony is one of many, was embedded in our social studies. And it's very clear that having good social skills leads to better citizenship. So it is a noble and important part of educating kids. It brings me back to thinking about, you know, Harry Wong, and what a great job he did with welcoming kids to school, you know, teachers welcoming kids to school, you know, creating an atmosphere that's conducive to learning. As I continued my research, I thought it was interesting because CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, it's that, you know, big organization that combs through these curriculums and makes recommendations about them, so it faced value, you know, with the, with the state approving it, and being on the list for CASL approved, and the fact that it's free. This is another classic example of why squeezing us so badly financially is very dangerous. So I hope the state is listening as I say that. Because as I continued my research, this was not an initiative of an educator. Sanford Harmony is the idea of a man named T. Denny Sanford. And T. Denny Sanford is a billionaire, he's the richest man in South Dakota. He started First Premier Bank, which is a credit repair bank, and he made his billions on the backs of people with very poor credit to help them repair their credit when they couldn't get a credit card anywhere else. So yes, maybe he was doing a service to folks like that, but he also was handsomely rewarded for his business acumen. He's the one behind all of this, and he's a big contributor, I'm not going to say which party, I'm not going to say which PACs he has. But he also, in August of just this year, had gone into some trouble with the law, having to do with kids, and, and it is now being investigated, investigating as part of a grand jury, and there has been absolutely nothing that I can find since that was put public. Because now that it's in the hands of the grand jury, and, you know, someone of his stature can make things go away. So it is interesting when you peel back the layers of the onion, when I've gone through Sanford Harmony, there are some wonderful lessons in there that are very, very helpful to kids. But there are also things in there that go way beyond our, what we should be doing as a school system. And that's something that is completely up to the parents and their values, every kid should be safe at school, should get along with each other. So I do know that the curriculum maps, my understanding was that those lessons were either pulled or are going to be pulled. I think it's very important to continue with the social skills training, especially in today's times, but this is a gigantic reminder of how mindful we have to be. It needs to be somebody's responsibility to look at each social skills curriculum, I guess, chapter by chapter, lesson by lesson, to make sure that these kinds of things aren't creeping in. So, yeah, it is amazing what I was able to find out. And then the fact that this curriculum is being used in the 10 most populous districts in the country, you know, and is being touted as being, you know, a really, really great curriculum. And in a lot of ways, I agree that it is, but there's also some very, very troubling parts to it. So that's what I found out.
Yeah. Well, it sounds good that someone's going to go through and they're going to pull these things, but here's the caveat. You get on free for online, and you have access to everything. And I was told that there was cards, or they were told not to use that, but guess what? Teachers have been given a box of cards, I've asked teachers, have you been told not to use certain lessons? And they'll say, no, it's free for all. And I'm like, okay. So we got this box of cards that may have been pulled, maybe not, but even if the box isn't pulled, you go online and those same cards are there. So this program is deceiving, and it's dangerous, and yes, there may be something good in there, but the bad outweighs the good. And they're accessible, and what may not, you know, what you may value may be different than another teacher, and it is slipping through the cracks, and what these students have been taught at such a young age, they will never get that back. You will never get back, what that little boy was taught from the different value system from his father. You will never get back the hurt the little boy had when he had to go to his parent that night, sad, from school, because he had to make a video and say what he didn't like about his parents. You'll never get that back. So this program is dangerous, I think we need to halt it, and that's my, that's where I stand.
It sounds like, it sounds like this, this program has tenants in it that steals the innocence of these kids. And I think we need to make sure that, whatever we can do to get this thing resolved and stopped, we need to get it stopped.
I just looked up the definition of social studies, I just went to dictionary.com, just out of curiosity. A course of instruction in an elementary or secondary school comprising of such subjects as history, geography, civics, et cetera. So social some et cetera, I don't think that's half the, half the, half the plan for social studies. It looks to me, because nowhere does it say social skills yet, just has an et cetera, but history, geography, and civics, it's the definition. So for us to reinvent, reinvent social studies and say that the primary, I mean, when almost, like, half of it's going to social skills, that is not the intent of social studies in our schools.
And I have one more comment, and I'll let it go, because it was talked about money in the state. I want to remind this board that we have been given $1.2 million to use for this mental health assessment, and we chose the free program. And so I, you know, I think we'll be learning more about where that money is, you know, where, how we have, how it's being spent and stuff, but... But I just wanted to throw that out there too because there's no excuses for what had happened. And I think we just need to...
And when you've got a bad pot of stew and it's burnt, you can't, you can't change the taste. It's a bad pot of stew, it's burnt.
I don't disagree.
You can't keep adding stuff to it. This looks like a bad program. My favorite saying, and y'all all know me, a little truth helps lies go down. So the program has a lot of truths in it, but then here's the lies. And that's how it goes down. And this parent caught it. And a little truth makes the program look great. It helps the lies go down that's embedded in it. And I'm with Ms. King. This is not something that we need to have a group of people look at it. Ms. King's looked at it long enough. She's read it. You saw, you saw the background of where it's coming from. It's, it's actual tenants, the actual tentacles. This needs to be stopped until we figure it out, not while we figure it out. Because students are continuing to be taught. I brought to this school board seven years ago, the fact that we were teaching out of a world history book that was totally, completely so biased that the Jewish community in Palm Beach County said, you buy that and every one of you school board members are dead, gone, not dead, gone, dead politically. So they said, oh, well, let's see what's going on here. So it was all researched, a total anti-Semitic world history, something like 50 pages or something on it. So it was a ridiculous amount anyway, paragraphs or pages on it. 80% of the school districts in the state of Florida continued teaching on that Pearson book. And I, and it was kept so secret that only because I have a teacher, family member and relative, and I have contacts into Palm Beach County, was I able to find out about this. I brought it to this school board. Well, we already bought the book. We can't throw it out now. We'll just kind of teach around it. We'll put it in the curriculum maps that we'll teach around it. But it's in the book. I said, pull the pages out of the book. Don't teach it. Pull the pages out. Oh, no, no, no. So for five years, maybe six, I think we used that book six years instead of five, I think, because we didn't do our social studies curriculum, our students, and 80% of the students in the state of Florida, only the Palm Beach County students got the truth because Pearson rewrote the book for Palm Beach County and put the truth in it. But only 80% of the students in the state of Florida were taught anti-Semitic, biased stuff against Israel. And it just flowed. And nobody did anything about it. And it happened right here in this county. So Ms. King, I'm about fed up with, we've already got it, we might as well use it. I'm with Ms. King. It's bad, it's burned stew, dump it out.
I don't, I don't disagree at all. I think that my perspective was just how things end up in, in our district. And when you look at curriculum that has been vetted by what are known to be, for lack of a better word, just keeping it simple, you know, good, good sources, then, you know, that's why we make the decisions that we do. And then when it's uncovered that there is more to the story, then there does have to be a sense of urgency to do something about it quickly. And when I mentioned the mental health appropriation, you know, yes, we were given $1.2 million, but I think we all know that that doesn't come close to scratching the surface for what all that is supposed to be covering. It's not an excuse for, but it is a reason to be looking at any way we can. You know, our taxpayers would be asking, well, if there was a free one, why didn't we use it? You know, well, now I'm worried that even the ones we would have to pay for may have some things embedded in them too. So, so again, you know, thank goodness that this has been uncovered. It's a lesson for, for all of us. And I also agree that it's very difficult to go teacher to teacher to teacher. I don't want to lose the civics and the citizenship and the, and the social skills. I think that's very important. We have our whole soft skills initiative. But that's where it needs to end, you know, not delving into different families' values and that kind of thing. So, so I would, I would agree. I would like to hope that there is a way to pull this out sooner than later, like very soon. And while replacing it in the meantime with something that is at least covering the bases that we all know are important for kids to know and learn to be successful, you know, with their social interactions and things like that, and their citizenship especially. So that's a task.
Ms. McCall, do you have anything to say?
Everything's been said. I'm just, I've never been a Sanford Harmony fan.
You've never been a fan for what?
Never. And when I looked at the lessons that the gentleman was referring to, that is not our role. That is family value roles that we don't need to step into. So I'm in agreement. I don't want to pull out if we can, if we can add to our soft skills curriculum, which makes a lot of sense to me, for those good citizenship skills that we all need. There is no doubt that we do have children who need a lot more than that. And I think our mental health plan helps address that.
Those tier three kids, yeah.
Those tier three kids. And I know that a lot of that money went to help with extra social workers and all of that. So, you know, everything's been said. I believe we, we need to find a curriculum that goes along with good citizenship and the soft skills that will work.
And I don't think it needs to be the majority of, such a huge portion of our social studies. I mean, how can our kids pass their FSA, social studies and all the stuff they have to pass if, if they're given, you know, if so much of their teaching time is taken up with politically whatever driven topics? And I'm with you, Ms. McCall. We all understand what good citizenship, being nice, we all understand that. That is not a complicated topic. And...
Well, and I would question the legality of, and Ms. King's pulled some of the statutory, but was it stated that the social emotional well-being curriculum needed to be a part of social studies? I mean, is that a state mandate? Or is that what we chose to do as a county?
Where to embed it, yeah.
So that has a lot to do maybe with the legality of it is, is...
You want to speak?
Where it needs to be embedded.
It sounds like what I'm hearing from all of you is that we suspend the use of this platform until we get...
If we can. I still would like Mrs.
I think we still need to suspend it and let legal find out where we, where we are, what can we do. Give you opportunities.
Mr. McCall.
If he wanted to address, and then I'll ask my question.
Okay. So, board members, thank you for the comments and I know there's a lot of concern. I think what I would like to do is just, I've tried to mentally gather some of your, your questions as you've each spoken. And what I would like to do is address that the best that I can. So I'll kind of start from the beginning without trying to take too much time. I know that this is our third year of implementation. Marjorie Stoneman Douglas massacre occurred on Valentine's Day, 2018. About 20 days later, state law was passed and essentially said we had four months to create a mental health plan. Part of that plan states a evidence-based tier one curriculum. And I know that we may get some more legal, you know, opinion of what that means. When we, so the original team, to Ms. King's point, was our Student Services Leadership Team. I can tell you that at the time, choosing a tier one curriculum, and by no means are any of our, are we sold on this curriculum. It was the best decision that we had made at the time. That was one of a thousand different things we had included in the mental health plan. And so, we did have our committee, our group, review that. We had other stakeholder groups, multiple departments, including cadres of teachers review it. Nothing was flagged in terms of what, like, the concern that's been brought for the board. Obviously, what I want to let you know right off the bat is that what we've heard over the last two and a half years has been nothing but positive. The two concerns, both in Ms. King referenced, have been since school started this year. I want to assure you that if we had have heard that, obviously, we'd have paused and taken a deeper look as well. We have not had a negative or concerning comment, in fact, just the opposite, especially from teachers. And so, I'll get you to curriculum maps in a minute. But we did have several different groups that read it. And to your all's point of reviewing lessons, I think the caution there is that we've had multiple, four to five different groups of individuals review these without red flags. So my, just moving forward and whatever decision is made, obviously, we'll move forward with. My concern is in reviewing anything like this, sometimes to your all point, it's subjective. And so, we could have a group of educators look at it and not red, red flags, and to others it may. And obviously, so the point of this committee that we'll be convening, if we convene at this point next week, would be to include parents. And that was not part of the process, to be completely transparent. That was not part of the process before. Once we had, our team had looked at all the different options available, we did acknowledge that it was CASL approved, which, which is one organization we rely on for evidence-based material. Without a doubt, it was, at that point, we had four months to get this, you know, plan up to you and approved into the state. And we had not received funding yet. We were told we were not going to receive funding for several months. And so, the cost factor did come in. That plus considering at the time, I don't know if it still is, haven't looked, but a majority of districts in Florida were using it. We really had nothing to show us that we should not move forward with that. Obviously, we do now and we can readdress that. So I want you to know that we're not particularly sold or trying to push any one thing. We're trying to do the double-edged sword of abiding by the law and doing what's best for kids. We've heard great things about Sanford Harmony. Obviously, with these concerns, we'll, you know, that's, that's something new that, that we will address. And so, I want to address the mental health plan and, and Ms. King, to your point, that funding. And so, you know, I don't know what exact cost rate a new SCL program would be for our tier one, for elementary age students, but it's going to range probably between $100 and $300,000, just based on averages. And so, and Sanford Harmony is free. And so, what does that mean in terms of our mental health plan? If that's the funding source we use, that's, that's positions that are cut. And part of the other requirement of state law under the mental health plan is we reduce ratios. We reduce student counselor ratios, we reduce student social worker ratios, and student psychologist ratios. And that would impact that. So while this may seem as, as one isolated decision, there, in terms of mental health plan, there's, there's many more that go into that. Finally, I would like to address the curriculum maps. And so, the curriculum maps, they were, Sanford Harmony lessons were not embedded in the curriculum maps the first year at all. And I'm going off memory here, so please forgive me. In 1920, last year, we did embed them in the curriculum maps. And from my understanding, that was, to be honest, the request of some of our teachers in that they, they liked doing the lessons, they thought it was beneficial, but obviously didn't have time to do that. So, so part of putting in the curriculum map was to provide that time. Now, the way it looks on the curriculum map this year versus last year, last year was much different. It wasn't near as much. The reason that it was so heavily involved this year, especially the first 10 days of school, was a direct recommendation from the reentry committee over the summer. And, and that emphasis from, from that committee, and to be honest, from, from you all as the board over the summer was, when these kids come back from five months off, their social well-being is just as important as academic. And that is exactly what was reiterated by the summer committee. And that was their emphasis, that we address social emotional learning just as important as we do academic. That's why it was addressed the first 10 days. And then it starts to wean off after that to the normal implementation of the curriculum. So, so that is the reasoning for, for the curriculum map and the emphasis, especially those, those first two weeks. In regards to next steps, obviously, I'll take the direction of the board. Just to let you know where we're at now, as Mr. Vianello mentioned, we do, I'm in the planning process of setting up a committee to start next Thursday to review every single lesson, over, over 120 lessons. If it's decided that, that we're halting and we don't need to move forward with that committee, then that's fine. If that's the, the board consensus. What I will say is though, to Mr. Vianello's other point, is we would still need a committee, I would assume at this point, to look at all curriculums on the table for further implementation in, in further years. And so, we, you know, again, I'll go with the direction of the board, but I would assume that committee would still need to convene so that we can start, start from scratch and look at all tier one curriculums for, for the future.
You know, I'd like to comment one, one thing to what he said. We don't know how many districts have maybe pulled this section out already because it's a well-kept secret. Because those who push these type of agendas would help keep it secret, exactly the way the people who pushed the anti-Semitic agenda with Pearson did. So, Ms. Thrower, like you, we think so much alike. You went for the roots to this program. I went to the roots of Pearson at the time that this was happening with this anti-Semitic book. When I pulled the financial information on the corporation, that the Pearson Corporation and the ownership and that sort of thing, I bet was, it stated that Qaddafi's son was a major stockholder in Pearson. And we have a very anti-Semitic book, okay? So when you look at the roots of where it came from, Ms. Thrower, I did the same thing. So, as I'm screaming from this board seat about this book that we're teaching these kids anti-Semitic right here in this, in our school, you know what they said to me? Well, Ms. Stacy, 80% of the school districts in the state of Florida are using it. Does that make it right? That we have a book that Qaddafi's son is a major stockholder in, in the corporation, according to the financials on the internet, that I pulled lots of, lots of documentation, that we should teach it because 80% of the school districts are doing it? And so, that's why when we see, well, everybody's doing this. I was raised in the old days. And I would like that in our social understanding in our schools. Just because everyone's doing something, Ms. Nancy, doesn't make it right. You're not going to do that. That's what I was taught. And I would like to see that back in our social stuff, in our schools, in our skills, like you're talking about, Ms. Thrower. Just because everybody's doing something doesn't make something wrong right. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Can I say one more thing and then I'll be done? Just because I feel like I need to respond to what you said a little bit because you brought in teachers. So I did do a little bit of snooping and there's some teachers that didn't see anything wrong. You're right about that. But I also had teachers that say, like, you know, last year or the year before, when they saw it come in, they were like, nah, there's no way I'm teaching that. And I still want you to know, there are still teachers in this district that know better and they're saying, nah, there's no way I'm teaching that. And the, and the intent was for the well-beat, social well-being of our children. We want nothing more than have good citizens. But with this program and what's happened, we have confused our children. We're confusing our children. And I'll leave on this final note because this is what I was told and I think, you know, since we're being transparent and stuff. I did have a teacher tell me about this program. She goes, I'm doing it, we're doing it because I'm being compliant. And she said, but I'm not seeing the real follow-through with the children that are at most risk. She's not seeing that follow-up. They're being compliant, they're doing what's on their curriculum map if they're told, but they're not, she said, they're not seeing the help that these children truly need. And I'm going to leave it at that, the ones that are at risk.
And thank you, Mr. McCall, for everything that you've shared. And it's important for people that aren't educators to know, you know, that there's tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction. And, and tier one is the instruction that all students, you know, can benefit from and that need to know as far as, you know, citizenship and being able to work in a group, you know, all of those basic things. And then, you know, we also know in our community that we have tier three kids that come to us with a whole host of difficulties and diagnoses and illnesses and, and social problems that really do need a much more intensive tier three type of instruction. And there's social skills curriculum that cover those bases, ones that are more designed for tier one, everybody, tier two, small group, tier three, the real individualized types of things. So it sounds to me like the state has recognized, especially after Marjorie Stoneman Douglas and multiple other school violence issues, that our kids are in sore need of, of support in schools in partnership with families. So I love hearing, you know, having families, you know, be in on the, the committee, including the Mr. Pester Buchanan, you know, that came in front of us. Hopefully, he can be part of that. And what's disappointing about all this is that it feels like a blind side, you know, when, when you're going with evidence-based and, and reputable recommendations from people that you trust, and then you peel back the layers of the onion and, and you find these things, you know, to, to T. Denny Sanford's credit, his name is on all kinds of incredible projects and programs and buildings and, you know, all for the benefit of, of children. You know, if you... if you research him. So this is just, you know, part of some things that he's been involved in, but, but until you really peel back all the layers of the onion, sometimes you get to a root that is pretty poisonous. And so I would like to think that there would be something out there that could replace this, that would be more in line of what we feel is our true mission as a school district. So, and that's a heavy lift, because we certainly don't want to sacrifice the, the progress that we've made, you know, with getting more social workers, which is so important in psychologists. We're so far from the ratio, which I know comes from people that are in the business and trying to get people jobs, just prefacing that. But at the same time, we're so, we're so not near that, that I, you know, so that's where I am.
So I would like to go ahead and see the committee convene, because we're going to need that input on, on whatever we do. And I think if we can get a jump ahead of it, I think that's a good thing to do. And I know that cost is going to be, as we look at our budgets, you know, it's going to be an absolute consideration. Are there parts of Sanford Harmony that could be used? I mean, I don't know. I, I'm not an instructor, so, so I don't know. Can we, and there again, then we begin to censor, you know?
We give the program credibility. We give the program credibility if we continue to use it and say pieces of it are right, because now Lake County down the road is going to say, well, Marion County's using Sanford Harmony, it must be great. I think we're giving a bad pot of stew credibility for being good, and I think that restaurant would be closing real quick if it was in the real world. And I, if it's not good, why do we want to put lipstick on a pig? I don't get it.
So I would like to convene the committee and look at all the curriculum.
I, I would like for us to convene the committee as well, but I still would want us to halt using, using the program.
Yeah, but if this committee, is this the committee I was invited to, or is it not? Okay, so can, since I'm on this committee, can I request that if, if we're going to do it that soon, honestly, is that enough time to get your ducks in a row and come and truly have good conversation that is going to relevant, or is it going to be a waste of my time and Mr. Buchanan's time to come and sit in a meeting to not be any farther than what we are right now? That's what I'm getting at.
I think if we pause it right now until the committee convenes and gets it done, I think they'll move very fast.
Can you, you think you could do it in a week?
So in my mind, there were going to be actually two committees. The, the initial committee, more time-sensitive, was going to be to review every lesson and, and to identify any that, any lessons of concern. If, if the idea is to halt the program and we're not using it, I don't, I don't know if there's a need for that committee. The other committee would be to actually compare programs for the future.
That's where we need to be.
That would definitely need more time to even pull together resources to, for the committee to compare.
I think that we're going to be in more legal trouble if we, if we continue doing things that's outside our wheelhouse. And if we suspend it for, until we get some answers, I think people will move a whole lot faster. Committees tend to sometimes committee you to death to where now we need another committee, another committee, and before we know it, it's April. But if we suspend the program right now, because we've seen enough about it to know it's got some burnt pieces to it, and programs kind of subtly build on one another, like it's a little bit this way and it kind of builds, it puts out, the things we don't even catch on, but kids do. They say cartoons are that way. Kids see stuff in cartoons and shows that we don't see, but it just, it just sucks them into it. We don't understand the mental stuff and where it all comes from.
As a board, what's the direction we're given? Because we're, we just keep, we just keep kicking this horse, we just keep kicking this horse, let's, let's deal with the situation so we can move on.
We need to get a legal opinion.
Well, but we need, but Ms. McCall, I agree, we need a legal opinion. But we know, I don't need a lawyer to tell me this is a bad program.
I need Ms. Green's opinion.
So I'm hearing a couple of things. Obviously, I will take a look at the statute, that's a very limited kind of question, but I do think y'all have been using this term due diligence quite a bit during this conversation, that we need a bit of direction. And these are the things that I'm hearing, and I've just written some notes, that you're uncomfortable and don't feel like you did due diligence with this particular curriculum. So there's an offer to have a committee that would take a look at that, as well as another committee to look at other curriculums. I think you could today, especially with the Concerns Express, temporarily halt this particular curriculum if there's consensus to that, and allow then staff to have both of these committees going, so that you feel like you've accomplished your due diligence. It gives legal some time to look at the big, but you know, we only, that'll be very narrow. This information will be very important to you, and you could have both of those committees going. That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm, that's what I, that's my suggestion. Can we have both of these committees running simultaneously?
It's possible. My concern with, on comparing curriculums is that we would have to, we would just need a little bit more time to even obtain what, what's out there, obtain the materials to, to physically review. It, it just may take a little more time to get that to set up.
But they could run simultaneously.
Yes.
I think that's the question, is yes, they could, if, if that's whatever.
But still halted.
This is my opinion. Halt it, stop it, get your committee together. I, I can, as a board member, I can already tell you that I am not in favor, I've done my due, I've looked at it, I'm telling you, it's, and, and actually, it's in our classrooms now, there is a free online site, and maybe, Ms. Green, you could send it to my other board members, sign up and look at the lessons yourself and, and see, but you're going to see that it just goes on and on, and there's mind maps, and it just goes on and on and on, and it's a slippery slope, and there is no way to pull out certain lessons with this. And so if you tell me that, I'm going to debate that, because I know better. I was on there and it's in there.
So you're saying that these lessons are interconnected to further lessons in that curriculum?
Yes.
Yes, it's like a little trick.
Yes, it's like, whoop, 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 you just keep on going.
So can we, let's, let's do this. Let's halt, let's temporarily halt this use of this curriculum, and, because we got to move forward, guys. Let's temporarily halt it, go ahead and get both of those committees up, running simultaneously, review it, and then we come back and talk about it.
Is there consensus on that?
Yes, for me. Because even though we've already made, I've already made up my mind, but I think that having a review of it would be very helpful for, as you were saying about, for other districts, you know, we've, we've obviously uncovered something here, and it may be helpful then.
Well, I want to give credibility to us all.
Well, yes, that, and then also too, Mr. McGowan, and from your professional perspective, is there a curriculum out there right now that is more in line with our mission of soft skills, citizenship, you know, civics and that kind of thing? Because we certainly don't want our kids to be missing out on this critical instruction. Hopefully we all agree that this, that, yes.
If it's right.
Is important, right.
Right, but this is wrong. I'd rather nothing and teach our students, you know, history or whatever, that's what I want. This, I'm telling you, this program, I don't, I personally don't even think we should waste our time on this program anymore, and I think we need to move forward. It's, I mean, time is valuable, and there's a sense of urgency, so that's where I stand.
For us to make good decisions, Ms. King is going to work on one of these committees as well. I would like for another board member, Ms. Thrower, if you can work on the other committee as well, so that we can make sure that we're doing our due diligence in this whole process.
Yes.
That's, that's what we have to do, we have to make good decisions, but we need the information to make it. I, I'm leaning where you are, Ms. King, and I feel you, but I just want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the whole.
I think there's enough mad stuff in this program that's been uncovered and a trail that I think y'all need to, my opinion, from one board member's position, you need to start today looking at a new program, looking at something different.
Well, that's what one of those committees.
Because I'm not going to vote. If I had known this when I voted for this Harmony thing, if they had told me this was in it, you wouldn't have had it for three years. So I'm taking my vote back. If I, if I supported it, I'd take it back.
Thank you.
Therefore, it's no longer supported by this board member.
Isn't we giving you clear directions, Dr. McGowan?
Yes, ma'am, I, I just want to, and again, I'm sorry, but I just want to clarify to Ms. King's point, I, I don't want to waste anyone's time, and, and I understand the value of maybe the committee to review the current lessons, which would be the one committee. I, if the intent and the consensus is we're not continuing with this, I wouldn't want to waste people's times, including our parents, to come in and review 120 lessons when we know there's no intent.
I think this program's gone.
I would rather convene with it.
If you're saying, so are we saying that we're through with Sanford Harmony?
I'm done.
I am, I'm just thinking about the greater good because it's in so many.
If we're through with Sanford Harmony, let's, let's explore the next.
We need a new, we need you to look for us a new program.
So with that being said, what I would like to just preface that by is that, yes, to your, to your question, Ms. Thrower, there are other curriculums out there, we will convene a committee to review those, come back with some recommendations.
And the cost.
And the cost. And what I would like to say, just, just for the big picture of everything, by the time a contract and purchase is done, I cannot foresee that happening this year.
Right.
Now, I could be wrong, I mean, it could get done faster than that, but just usually the, the length of that process, we could be looking at August or next year.
Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, chairman and members of the board, I appreciate the conversation, and, and we want to make sure that we're clear on next steps. So, Mr. McGowan, can you speak to the tier one requirements? So if we halt it, what will happen for that piece? And you'll provide, convene a group to provide guidance to address that requirement?
Yes, ma'am. So, and I would, you know, have to go back and look at the specifics, but yes, I mean, it is required as part of our mental health plan that, that we do have a, you know, to Ms. Thrower's point earlier, a, a tiered system of supports, which includes tier one, which is for elementary, we're using Sanford Harmony. So if that is halted, we would not have anything in place. I do believe there's some other schools that are using some other programs, Leader and Me is one that comes to mind, so, but again, that's a, a school-based purchase, I don't believe that's something that we could utilize district-wide, but, but I would have to look further into what that requirement is.
I would really rather take my chances with the state coming down on us for dumping a program that has this kind of political ramifications to it than to take the wrath of this community coming down on me. I think I'd really rather go toe-to-toe with the state of Florida, okay, with the DOE. Mr. Corcoran, I'd rather go toe-to-toe with Mr. Corcoran, and I believe 100% he'd agree with me and what we've done here, because I know him personally. So I'm not afraid of any kind of tier one scary boogie booze, okay? Not afraid of them.
And Ms. Candy, your point, I mean, the, the tier two and tier three will still be in place? I mean, that's not being, you know, that's still in the equation for, for those students in need. This would just be the, the tier one aspect, so.
Maybe there'll be some, maybe there'll be another free, you know, curriculum that's more in line with, with our, our mission, and obviously that would be great. But in the meantime, I, I do know that there's lots of social skills curriculums in, in schools that could be brought forward. Start with hello part of Sanford Harmony or not?
No, it's, it's a separate program.
Okay, I thought so. So maybe that would also be very helpful, because I'm thinking about, you know, the, the direct impact to schools now, because schools are going to hear, oh, they're, you know, this has now been halted, so what are we going to do? Because there are aspects to Sanford Harmony that have been helpful. So it would be great to provide some guidance to the schools, well, to fill this vacuum, what can be recommended in the meantime, that we're darn sure is in line with our mission. And some of that stuff's on the shelves.
So, so we got clarity, and we can move forward. This is my four-time say this.
That's why you're the chair, sir.
Four times the charm.
We are halting the use of Sanford Harmony.
And there's a consensus for that.
Yes.
There's a consensus. We will notify the schools to not use Sanford Harmony today, today.
In technology, we move it, or is it too late?
So there's, there's both a, a kit that each teacher is provided, as well as the online version, so we would have to remove the kits.
So can we have the teachers, can we have teachers turn that stuff into the principals or whoever, today?
And count them, like no slipping in, no sneaking in.
We have those in inventory, so we would have to have them.
So all teachers, y'all listening, take them to your principals today, pack them up. And then the next thing is, the next component of this is that there will be a committee that will convene to look at other curriculum to replace Sanford Harmony. Is that the consensus, guys? Because we moving, we're not going to keep talking about this.
There's one, the technology component.
And then the technology component.
Maybe they could figure that out to.
Of trying to pull it off.
Yeah, because it's going to sneak, it's going to be sneaky in, I'm sure, so.
Mr. Corrillo, help us.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other administrative briefing?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move fast. So everybody else that's on the agenda, quickly, we want to move fast. Elena, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez with our 2021, 2022 draft school board meeting, public hearings, work sessions.
Board members, you have received the 2021 board meetings, public hearings, work sessions. This is a draft of everything forthcoming. This is a fluid document, so dates may change. Ms. Boston Ellis has updated all of her dates for financial, for the finance part of it. The five adopted plans are in here with their dates for rural development, rulemaking. I ask that you please review this document. Should you have any questions, email me, I'll be more than happy to review it with you. This will be on the board agenda for November 10th for board approval. That's it.
I have one quick question, and it's regarding the approval of the instructional calendar for 2021 and 2022. Last year, we did convene a, a committee, and I think that was very well received. I see Mr. Ayers back there, so can we do that again, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Any public comment? Another one? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Lopez. Mr. Ayers, review of district-wide attendance zones.
Oh.
So let's do this, let's, let's, I, I don't want to do this, but we going to do it. We need a five-minute break.
Thank you.
I have to go, too.
I say I come up, everybody leave.
You haven't had babies.
Dog, did you have a puppy, puppy accident or?
Nah, a horse-dog crash, and I broke my femur.
I know it had to involve an animal, so.
I broke my, I did a kidney fracture here. I broke my, I did a comedy fracture here.
Pandemic has put me back into.
That's what happened.
We're reconvening, and we're going to hear, at 10:43, we're going to hear from Mr. Stephen Ayers concerning our district-wide attendance zones. Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Good morning, Pastor Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Green, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez. I'm here today to do my annual report of attendance boundaries. As we look at these numbers and we talk about this, one thing I want you to keep in mind that these numbers include MCPS online students and traditional brick-and-mortar students. Because MCPS online is an extension of the classroom, and that student could flow back really at any time. So I want to make sure that when we talk numbers, it includes the online students and the traditional brick-and-mortar students. So, again, when we talk about the approaches to capacity, of controlling capacity, we talk about controlled open enrollment. And again, controlled open enrollment is a state statute that basically says that any parent can send any child to any school, regardless of reason, as long as there's capacity to receive the student and the parent, you know, provides transportation. So a parent could live in Orlando, drive every day to Marion County, and as long as there's space, they could attend. And so that's one, the main reason how we attempt to balance our schools and control our enrollment at schools. Another approach is public relations. Parent, the public perception of a school impacts that school and whether parents want to attend that. And our schools are getting a lot better. And so the public relations aspect of schools is getting better. And so more parents are not wanting to leave a school because it's a, quote, "bad" school that comes through my office. And so that's a good thing. We strengthen our magnet and our choice programs. Parents will select a good program at a school. But again, as I've said before, when I've come before you, my role and my job as the school choice person is to make sure that there's a good program at the neighborhood school. A student should not have to leave their neighborhood school because it's a bad school or good program. They should leave because it's a choice that the family's making because of the program. And so we go from there. And then the last step is always rezoning or redistricting schools. The issues that we address when we look at the boundaries and our attendance zones is, the number one is transportation, which is time on the bus and the distance traveled. I believe I heard a good comment last year, Marion County is the size of Rhode Island. And so we have all our buses traveling. And so that is definitely a consideration that we take. But since a lot of our schools are spread out, you know, it's a lot more difficult than, you know, first look. But we always look at transportation. We want to make sure we have balanced demographics. Again, there's been conversation that we're no longer under a desegregation order from the Department of Justice, and we've received our unitary stats, but we're still monitored. So we still need to make sure that our schools mirror the county. And so we have to make sure we're cognizant of our demographics and also maximize enrollment of our school. So make sure that we're being fiduciarily responsible with taxpayer dollars to make sure we're using our facilities appropriately. And so we want to make sure that we're doing that. First, I want to look at our high schools, all our traditional high schools. And again, these numbers are MCPS online and traditional brick-and-mortar numbers. As we look at these numbers, we have four high schools that are closed for controlled open enrollment, which means they're over 90% capacity, and therefore, we can't accept out-of-area students. But we have three that are open for controlled open enrollment. When I look at our high school seats available, we have over 12,000 students in the high school level. We have 12,800 seats. So we have a surplus of 817 seats of high school seats for a 94% utilization, which is very good. So our high schools are doing very well with the capacity of the issues of where we stand for that. And again, this is our heat map that shows you where our schools are and where their location of, whether they're overcrowded or not. And you'll notice, as usual, we have a problem in the southwest portion of the county, which is a more populous part of the county. Again, we're moving on to middle schools. Here, we have four middle schools, which are closed for controlled open enrollment, because they're over 90% capacity. And we have, the rest of them are open for controlled open enrollment. And if you'll notice, our two lowest attendings are Fort McCoy and Dunellen, which are outlying schools, you know, that control the students. And so right now, our middle school seats, we have 9,688 middle school students in the system, and we have 11,000 seats. So we have a surplus of 1,395 seats for an 87% utilization thing. I like to see, again, for controlled open enrollment, I like to see a 90% number, and we're close to that. And so right now, our middle schools are in good shape. And then you can see our heat map for our middle schools of where our middle school issues are. Our elementary schools, we have a lot more elementary schools than we have the other schools. And so we are getting better with our overcrowding and capacities of, with middle, elementary schools. And a lot of that has become, a lot of our elementary schools are getting better than they have been in the past. Those parents are wanting to stay at those schools, and we're doing a lot better job of controlling movement through the issues that I said before. So all these schools right now are closed for controlled open enrollment because they're over 90%. Again, this goes up, anything south of, I mean, after Dun, South Ocala is open for controlled open enrollment. So I have more schools that are open for controlled open enrollment this year than I've had in the past, and that's for multiple reasons. There have been less need or requests for movement this year because of the MCPS online option that parents can have. And so that's, that does factor into this.
So at 90%, that school is closed?
At 90%. Once they reach 90% capacity, they are, they're closed, so out-of-area students cannot transfer in.
So, Mr. Ayers, I have a question. Dunellen Elementary is at 88% capacity, but Dunellen Middle is at 63%. Are some of those kids over at Liberty?
Well, some of them over at Liberty, and then I got Romeo Elementary that also is in the right, in the same area vicinity where Dunellen Middle is a bigger school as well. And so. And then these are the schools, our last part of our schools, and I direct your attention towards the bottom. Those are our schools that are under capacity. Yes, sir?
Real quick, real quick. If the schools are closed at 90%, how do you, how do, how do you get a school at 110%, 102%?
Well, we look at a school like, say, Ocala Springs Elementary School is at 110% capacity. Right now, it's all about utilization of the school. There may be portables on that campus that aren't, do not have seats attached. Because remember, we talked last year that once a portable reaches a certain age, we, that the state will no longer allow us to catch seats to them, but there's still good portables, and so we put them there. Obviously, we do not want our students, if we can help it in portables, but that's how we have it. Also, PE, you know, you look at class size, you know, a PE student can be a lot larger. And so as you look at an average, the students can be, we're not teaching them in hallways, is what I'm going to say. And so this is utilization of class size. Because every class size on the FISH report, you're familiar from Mr. Knight, what the FISH report does, the state allocates a certain number of seats per classroom, whether it's a pre-primary classroom, an elementary classroom, a secondary classroom, or an ESE classroom.
Thank you.
This is the big number that I want you to look at. This is our capacity issue of elementary schools. Right now, we have 18,000 elementary students, but we have almost 22,000 elementary seats. So basically, we're looking at a surplus of almost 4,000 elementary seats. And that's something that we always, as a board, need to be cognizant of, because especially as we start talking about wanting to build new schools and where do we want to build a school. The state's going to look at us and say, we want to build an elementary school. The state's going to come back and say, no, you're not, because you have 4,000 empty seats. That's basically four schools of empty seats. And we've talked in the past about how do we mitigate that and talk about that and work with that. We tried redistricting and rezoning all our elementary schools last year, and that creates a lot of problems because of some of the locations of our schools. So there's issues that are in place there, and there's lots of reasons why we have surplus elementary seats. But one of the bigger things that we've talked about also is reducing our inventory of our seats that we have. So here's our elementary schools, and you can see the heat map, as I like to call it, with where the schools are. The thing, our elementary schools are overcrowding, and our, some of our elementary schools has gotten better. And again, you know, Ocala Springs was almost up to 130% last year, and it is well down. It's still a lot, but it is well down. So district-wide, we have 39,000 seats, and you say, hey, Mr. Ayers, that's a lot lower than what I thought. I thought we were up over 40,000. These are our students that are in our traditional schools. We have a lot of students that are in Marion Virtual. We have students that are in some of our contracted sites. That accounts for the extra students. So basically, we have 6,165 empty seats sitting in the district for utilization of 87, which is close to the 90%, where I like to see the number. But we're very heavily weighted in elementary school where our empty seats are that we have. And so again, we want to start looking at ways that we can, you know, reduce our inventory of our number of seats.
What does the state require before we build a new school?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Knight on that because that's his world that he lives in. I do know that it is very difficult to go to, I mean, as you can recall, when we had to build the wing at Wyman Park, there was, you know, you, it was a lot of issues of them to be able to justify. You know, one thing that we may want to look at doing, and this is again Mr. Knight's world, is we replace schools as opposed to taking schools and building a new school, we could replace a school. I presented to you last year the possibility of hypothetically, of a school in the south part of the county that is very old, that would take a lot of money, replacing that school, moving it differently in the zone to tighten up so that maybe we could redistrict some things in the south. But those are issues that we can address for that. So my recommendation, as the director of student assignments, is due to the current enrollment numbers and uncertainty with COVID-19, adjusting attendance line for existing schools is not recommended. Because there's, there's a lot of uncertainty out there of where these students are, where they're coming from. So to move forward with redistricting, to try to address that, is difficult. But one thing that we can look at doing is our inventory of seats. I want to bring to your attention Evergreen Elementary School. We talked about Evergreen last year. We did do some rezoning of elementary, of Evergreen Elementary last year, where we removed approximately 200 students that were residing west of I-75 and moved them to College Park. And so that, that took the students, the potential students at Evergreen down. We want to look at potential attendance according to zone boundaries. When I look at schools and capacities, I look at the worst-case scenario per se, is I look at the kids that live in that zone, how many kids could possibly attend that school? So when I looked at Evergreen, we looked at that, the total school capacity, and again, school utilization. Part of my job with student assignments is to make sure that we're utilizing our assets appropriately. And we have a situation at Evergreen right now. So right, what I have up here is Evergreen Elementary School. You can see the zone. Currently, the students that live in the zone for Evergreen Elementary School, there's 392 actual students that live in that zone. That capacity of that school is 728. So if every single student that lived in the zone attended Evergreen, we would still have a surplus of 336 seats. As it stands now, those that are attending, there are 208 students that live in the zone for attending. There are 43 out-of-area students. A majority of those are professional courtesy or an ESE placement of that school. And so currently attending, there's approximately 251, and these are of 20-day count numbers. That number, our numbers fluctuate on a daily basis. So right now, we are severely underutilized at Evergreen Elementary School.
So where is that zone, though? Where is Evergreen's zone that those 400 kids live in? If we talked about sending them to another school, but where is the, I mean, I can't fill all your lines. Help me.
The pink, where the pink is, that's Evergreen's zone, the whole pink. That is the Evergreen zone. You'll see all the dots. Those represent the students. The blue dots represent the students that actually attend the school, and the white, and I think, I'm.
Okay, thanks.
So.
So the north, the north boundary is what, what row is that? 326?
I mean.
The north is, yes.
326?
Yes.
And the south is, and the south is, and the south is what?
14th Street.
Yes.
So, so it seems like their boundary is kind of overlapping Oak Crest?
Well, let's, let me go to the next slide. This is the, this is a slide that compares where Evergreen's boundary is in the pink, and the yellow is Oak Crest's, where Oak Crest's current boundary is. And so as we look at Oak Crest, I want to look at the same numbers for Oak Crest Elementary School. Currently, there are 613 students that reside within the zone for Oak Crest Elementary School. There are 376 of those 613 actually attending, with 85 out-of-area students attending. For total currently attending is 461, whereas Oak Crest has a capacity of 849 students. So Oak Crest is also underutilized as a school and for that. So what I look at is, when I do this, is what are our options? And the options is, again, to reduce inventory and to be a fiduciarily responsible, you know, school district, is if we combine the two zones, if we combine Oak Crest and Evergreen's zone, that has a potential of 1,000 students that get, that would attend that school, whereas the capacity of the school is 849. So if every single student, if this happened, and they attended Oak Crest Elementary School, we'd have, we would need 149 empty seats. And that's my worst-case scenario that I look at. And we know that they all don't go for different reasons. So right now, if every student that attended Evergreen and Oak Crest currently attended Oak Crest, we'd have, still have a surplus of 137. we'd have, still have a surplus of 137 seats. And so the issue is, I know we had some conversation, and we wanted to talk about where the.
Does that include portables at Oak Crest, though?
Yes, that includes portables. That includes every seat that we get, that the state is on our FISH report.
This is dealing with the seats.
Right. There were questions about the students that are not attending Evergreen and where are they attending? And, you know, Oak Crest and Evergreen have both been Florida Opportunity Scholarship Schools for the last three years, which means that the parents, due to their school grade, they got to transfer to other schools. Currently, students that live in the Evergreen zone, there are 10 students that are Florida Opportunity Scholarship. Our largest number of out-of-area students are academic choice that the parents are making, either through a magnet program or a different choice program that they have. And then 34 are attending a different school on controlled open enrollment. So the ones that took the, the choice to move out, there's only 10 current students that are zoned Evergreen that are going. The last couple of years, there hasn't been a lot that have taken advantage of the Florida Opportunity Scholarship.
Where are all the Evergreen kids at? Only half of them are in the zone, and 10 is going to be at Oak Crest, you just told me. And then you told me another number.
Right. A majority of the students, we currently have 30 students that are attending Madison Street. Then they got in through the lottery process. There are currently 34 students that attend Dr. and H. Jones that got into the lottery process. Our next highest number is students that are attending Oak Crest Elementary School. They live in the Evergreen zone, but they're attending Oak Crest. And a majority of those are there for the IB, the NYPD, so.
How many is that?
Ma'am?
How many is that?
I believe there are nine kindergarteners that are, kindergarten or first or second grade.
There's still like 100 students missing.
Yeah, well, they're, they're spread out. I've got 16 that attend Anthony Elementary School. I have 10 that attend Wyamina Park Elementary School.
So they're just all.
Yeah, they're, they're, and that's the controlled open enrollment.
Right, well, Evergreen's enough school, so they're like dispersing. That's why those students are not attending.
Right.
Evergreen Elementary.
But those schools have been struggling for a while.
For a whole year.
Right, correct.
But.
So the issue, this is me, the issue would be, how do you get these kids that are, that live in that area to come back to Evergreen or to come back to Oak Crest? And the simple thing in my mind, I'm thinking, is that you have to have programs that are very similar to the programs at Madison Street and N.H. Jones at Evergreen.
And.
Correct?
That would be correct, but a lot of times, you know, throwing a magnet program or stuff, the, the issue that Madison Street and Jones have is they have historical background that's with them. And so you can't just say, well, we'll put a, a similar program at Evergreen, and the next year, everybody will come. And so there's some historical, you know, tradition that's, that's built in on that.
Now, when they put the gifted program there, though, they did have about 80 kids come, didn't they?
Correct, from South Ocala.
Yes.
Yeah. The, the issue that we have, again, I want to bring back that this, the potential students that live in the zone is still way below what the capacity of the school is.
Correct.
And so, you know, if we look at, you know, repurposing Evergreen Elementary School and then combining to make one zone for Oak Crest Elementary School, we're much better utilization of our assets. I'm not here to tell you what we would repurpose Evergreen for, that's another discussion for another time. But what I'm requesting from the board is to look at, is this something that the board would like to pursue to go down? Because we, we, we've got a problem at Evergreen Elementary School with the utilization of the school. This has nothing to do with academics, this has nothing to do with that, but it's the actual utilization of the school. And so I've given you the numbers, we've talked about numbers, I've talked to each one of you individually. And so I want to make sure what, we're not here to solve the problem today, but I need some direction from the board, is this something that we want to pursue to go down?
Well, we don't have students in the zone to even fill the school up. I don't even know how we even were approved for a school in that area, but anyway, we were years ago. So at this point, and repurposing and combining and getting, instead of putting some type of magnet program at Evergreen or a magnet program at Oak Crest or something to draw, we have seriously spoken about, and we have, Ms. King talked about, and you talked, I think, about possibly Evergreen as a district office? I mean, we talked a little bit about it along the way as an, as, I mean, and I kind of was, and I was, you and I were kind of on the same page that, that is going to be an expense we have. The fact is, we're going to, this is something we're going to have to do, because I don't know how many more, I, I have no idea how much stuff's behind these walls, but I can just imagine any other old building in the county that's got a bunch of stuff behind its walls that's not good. It's going to happen. And we've, we're in, we, we're in the process, I guess, of appraising this property, appraising MTI, where we've got district people spread out over there, we got district people spread out over here, and we've got this going on. At Evergreen, we've got some land yet that a boardroom could be built there. You know, there's still land that's available that's not built on, the playground or something, I mean, if it's a.
Or remodel the cafeteria for the boardroom.
And so, because we don't need a playground if it's, if it's a, unless we're going to go to Sanford-Harmony, and they got a new way of adults having a playground or whatever, but anyway, so.
There's lots of, yeah, there's lots of.
That's an option I think is very, very interesting.
And going the other way as well, is if we looked at Oak Crest and combined that, there are some issues with Oak Crest that is lacking, that we would have to do. Like the PE aspect, you know, there's covered PE at Evergreen right now, where there's not covered PE at Oak Crest. So we would have to do a pavilion or something of that nature. So there are issues that we would have to address, and there's lots of avenues that we could go down. I haven't gone into a lot of those. What I've looked at is capacity of the schools and the potential to remove 721 seats out of our inventory that, in the proper utilization of the school.
The fact that this, this school is, does not even have the zoned kids to fill it up, doesn't, they're not there.
Right, they're not, they're not limiting the zone. There is potential of new, new people coming in, you know, the.
They're in that area.
With the Economic Development Council coming in, you know, there, there's growing, Marion County has the potential to grow. But right now, that's potential, you know, and.
What about that big old development that's planned by the old Pine Oaks Golf Course? Where would those kids go?
They would be zoned for Evergreen or Oak Crest, I'm sure.
Well, and, and Mr. Ayers, I understand in the spirit of time today that, that you're here to let us know about capacity utilization, AKA cheeks and seats, you know? It's, it's up to us as a board to then have further conversation. You know, representing both Oak Crest and Evergreen, I'm always interested to hear about potential options. However, I know how hard both of those schools are, are working. And so whatever we decide to do, I'm just going to say it right now, it needs to be with one heck of a lot of community participation and input.
That was going to be my next, where, where this doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but we are at a tight timeline, because we, you know, if we, if this is something we want to pursue, you know, if, anytime we change the boundaries, we have to have community meetings, we have to have community input and meetings and things like that. And then once all that gets out, we have public hearing at the school board meetings, and then we have to actually redo the zone, which takes, you know, some time. So I wanted to bring it to you today so that you could look at it and then give some direction as to what we want to explore and where we want to go.
I need to ask Mr. Cummins a question. The subdivision that you're talking about, I don't, I don't know the area. I sort of do as I've gone by that way.
It's actually the area over near Friends Recycling where the.
How far are they from Reddick?
Phoenix. It's.
It's not adoption.
It'd be too far.
See, I don't, I don't know.
They would be closer to Fes, to Fesidon than Reddick. So, no, so.
Yeah, and we do not have the capacity of Fesidon to absorb it anywhere.
Correct, correct. So I think you have to explore this option. We have to talk about it. It's in a comfortable situation to talk about it, but we got to talk about it. So we need to have all information to make a good decision on what we're going to do with Oak Crest.
And even if we repurpose Evergreen Elementary School as a school, we wouldn't be talking about demolishing and leveling it. And so you could repurpose it to have, you know, district offices and things like that. And then it would be a lot cheaper to reconvert it back to a school if the, if the need does show up in the future that we need that. It would be cheaper than building a new school to repurpose it and bring it back.
I'm, I'm kind of bored with redoing district offices. I think probably it's awfully confusing to switch. We've already had the expense of District East, and now we're back here. We shouldn't have ever left here in the first place. But I think we need to make a plan that's better than like a one-year plan.
There, there is a strong potential going back to that area where they're getting ready to build affordable housing on that golf course for the FedEx and all those people, those. There's, there's going to be an influx within the next three to four years of families coming in that area, so.
Is that a better place for a school over there, so they don't have, I don't know how far they are to Evergreen?
It's not very far.
Oh, it's not far.
It's not very far.
No, and there is a lot of growth right now. There is the FedEx and Amazon and Chewy, I mean, it's just popping up all over there. You know, and just thinking out loud, and, you know, Oak Crest is an older school, but we're going to place the students in the old school, and we're going to not utilize the new school. And then also, my other concern is, is we know Oak Crest is, seems to be following the same path as Evergreen has, and what's going to happen right down the road when we're no farther ahead with Oak Crest and wondering what we're going to do with this building? So I'm just throwing that out.
And I agree with that, and those are things that, that took into consideration. The reason that Oak Crest was chosen as a school is if you look at the map, the density, the population density around Oak Crest and the neighborhood walk zone around Oak Crest is a lot, is three, four, five times as much as it is currently around Evergreen. And part of the issue we looked at before is transportation time on bus, cost of transportation.
It's, what is it, three minutes on a school bus? It is, it is not a far distance from school to school. I mean, it's not big.
The other issue is, it changes the demographics, because that demographic is highly African-American in that area.
No, at Oak Crest.
Oak Crest.
Okay.
Yes. It changes.
The demographics at Evergreen and Oak Crest are very similar.
Are they? I'm just thinking about the, the housing complexes that I know that are near, that go to Oak Crest. It, I, it could, and, and it could definitely change the dynamics.
Dr. Gullett would like.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, Chairman Cummins, members of the board. For the purpose of today, we would just like to have some direction from the board on if any recommendations you want to come back and what options you'd like to see if you would like us to bring that back.
Ayers, you got to go ahead and explore it, I think.
And what am I exploring?
And what options would you like us to explore?
The feasibility of closing one or the other. I'm, I'm talking out loud, I'm one person, y'all say something.
I think we have to, because we won't, we won't be able to build a new elementary school in the area that we need it if we have all this capacity for seats. So I think you're right, combining whichever, whether we go to Oak Crest or Evergreen, but I think we have to start having that conversation.
And what are, and don't forget the repercussions when it's a failing school, and we're, we're going to have two schools that are closed, and, you know, I'm, we just can't keep closing schools and never improving our academics either. I'm just throwing that out there. And those children are going to other schools because they're failing, it's a failing school. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. Had it performed and been a better school, there would be more children in that school.
Neighborhood going.
Yes, they would be there. So let's just be transparent and call it like it is.
And we're talking years of struggle. So it's going to take years. Usually, you know, if you get back on a better track, then word gets around, and, and hopefully you get kids back there more quickly than it took to lose so many of them. However, there's a couple developments right by Evergreen, and that's my understanding as to why the school was built out there in the first place. But then the kids grew up and left, and, and a lot of families didn't move back in. It's just all the people, the family, the, the parents stayed, but they, but they didn't have any more kids.
But they choose new houses by school zone.
Yeah, and, and so that could also change as well. I'm open to that exploration, but I'm very reticent to say at all that I, there's a lot invested in what we've done with both of those schools, and, and they go ahead and make their grade this year, and then look at the timing of that, you know? So, yeah.
I also, I also think that we have to look at the, the possibility of, and I know you said there's some historical things behind it, of possibly turning it into a magnet school out there at Evergreen, which would draw some of those people back to that area, students to that area, and free up Madison Street and N.H. Jones for some others. So we have to, we have to explore all these options.
And, and we could do that, it just, but some historical thing is, you know, Oak Crest is a magnet school. You know, it does have the pre-IB program, and it hasn't been successful at drawing the kids there. You know, Reddick Collier is a magnet school, and we're not, Sunrise Elementary School is a magnet program, and so we put magnet programs there. And so they are, they are successful, and they're great programs. But having a magnet program in the thing isn't necessarily the, the end-all-be-all solution to say, you know, you build it, they will come. They will, but there's also his history behind certain things, so.
You know, and it sounds to me like possibly in the beginning, that school was set up to fail in that they didn't have the population in the zone to fill the school. So how did they fix that? They went to the black community, and they bused those kids like they do into the school, set the school up to fail by putting children on buses miles and miles away from their family. We all know that parental involvement does make a difference in a child's education. Mama can't get however many miles across town. So it was kind of like it was just kind of set up, it was just a, a set-up-to-fail whole scenario when the school started. Okay, we're going to build it here. Who knows, maybe somebody had some property in the school board, somebody, we don't know how those deals work. Oh, we'll put a school there, somebody's got some property they want to buy. But the school didn't have the people in the zone to even justify the school, sounds like. So they started immediately busing kids in. Well, when you start having to fill a school up by taking kids past two or three other elementary schools, and the parents can't get there, you're setting the school up to fail from day one. So it might be a school that should have never even been in the first place.
Oak Crest is the older school, correct?
Oak Crest is the older school.
Older facility.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got a lot of history, too, too. And, and I remember when Oak Crest was an A-school, and I think it was pretty crowded then when Janine Mills was principal.
Exactly, when Ms. Mills was over there, she, that school was an A-school, I remember that well.
And when you come back before us, can you give us several options, not just one or two, and try to trail us a certain way? Like, give us true options to look at and explore, and not just rehashed ideas that was presented.
The box ones.
Here you go.
I'm thinking that maybe, maybe Evergreen could have a magnet program there, still be a school, and then maybe one of the wings could either be for, for district folks to, you can't do that?
DOE will not, they're, they're already hollering at us for MTI right now, since we have district offices.
All right, so bad example, but, but we also know that, that earlier, we can reach kids the better, so maybe we could have a pre-K, you know, hub there or, or something. But, yeah, feel free to think outside the box.
I mean, then we can also go back to kind of the magnet program that we got set up at Jones and Madison Street. Maybe it's time for another one to bring people in, because they're pretty crowded and they're very successful when parents are going, taking their school to a school that they chose and, and, and set up a.
It has a tradition.
Instead of having a program here and a program there, set up a, another, I mean, it's been how many years since we had a matter? And we know why we started them. Well, evidently, we kind of got the same, a little bit of the same demographics over there that we could justify bringing more of the white community into, just like we did with Madison Street and Jones, which was the whole reason we set it up.
And that can be explored, but again, a reminder that Oak Crest is a magnet school, and Oak Crest.
But it's not a major, it's not like Jones or Madison Street, it's.
They're rebuilding, too, they're getting, trying to get their reputation back, and that doesn't happen.
We will bring many different options. The, the whole purpose was just to.
Thank you.
Enter into whether way you want us to.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers, we look forward to seeing what you bring back.
When do you want me to come back? That would be the next.
How long do you need to do a good job? Like, not just throw something together, like really thoughtful, because this is a big decision, so.
Yeah. It can be done, you know, whenever we want to do it. The issue is, if we want to make a decision to act this year for the next year thing, we're in a tight timeframe. And so, you know, we've got to start having those community meetings by January and, you know, board meetings and stuff like that going forward, so.
Next month?
Next month? When is the next work session?
Well, the next work session is November 5th, so since we're not having, we're not moving forward with recommendation to attendance boundaries. So we don't have to do that topic, so we can utilize that and put it in the, in the table.
5th is full with the presentations.
For the 5th.
The presentations, that's.
That's too short, though.
Too short.
Too soon, I think, not to provide, not to provide adequate information.
What about the one after the, what's the one after the?
After the 5th, it would be November 19th?
19th is what I'm looking at.
Thought we canceled that.
But that's.
We canceled the 24th.
24th. Can you bring something, get something back to us by the 19th, Mr. Ayers?
Yeah, I'll work with Dr. Gullett and Mr. Viñola.
Thank you.
That's something we have to think of, Mr. Cummins, too, on the, the new low-cost housing. We got to look at the demographics, and we can't just.
Correct.
Put them all at Evergreen.
Correct. You're absolutely correct.
Need to think forward, forward thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you.
So we'll see you on the 19th.
Yes.
Any public comment? Jody Phillips, sports and middle school sports update.
Good morning. Chair Cummins, Chair Thrower, Board Members, Attorney Green, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Martinez-Lopez. I appreciate you letting me come forward. I don't have a presentation, just a few talking points. We have been doing a bunch of. We have been doing a bunch of review between the Superintendent and Cabinet along with parents, coaches, you know, all of our athletic folks for winter. But I'm going to brief just real quick as we move into fall state series and playoffs, a couple of notes just so you know what's going on. During the playoff series, we started a little over a week ago now doing digital ticketing, 100% digital ticketing. We are controlling our capacities through the digital ticketing concept because the state uses a digital ticketing provider to do so. And we are also working with the same provider to help us transition in that direction for the future. But it has gone very well to this point. We had a couple of playoff volleyball games last night in our community and then last week Bellevue High School hosted a district tournament and all of it has been fully digital. That will be carrying through into the football playoffs as well again. And the parents, it has been well received in the communities and the parents. And so with that said, I do want all of you to know it will give our community folks, because you know, we've been on the voucher system, it is giving our community folks an opportunity to access tickets through the playoffs because truly they're not ours. We just simply host them for the FHSAA. So we have to open that up in that, in that reason. Our parents get them and they get links ahead of time. They get access to the tickets early on, so they can go on there and get them and we have not had trouble with that at all so far. So the other thing with fall sports that I just want you to know, and the Superintendent is aware that we will have to do some overnight travel potentially. We've got some long travel in some of these regards of these students from swimming, golfing, even, even potentially into team sports. I was looking at the track that Vanguard will follow in volleyball if they continue to win and there's a chance they may have to go all the way out to the Panhandle. And we can't send those students to drive six, seven, eight hours and, and not, that, that's just not a good it doesn't give them the opportunity to compete as well if, if we don't provide that access. So those will be on a case-by-case basis as we go forward. Winter sports, we have moved in and, and what has been decided through the committees and, and the coaches and athletic directors, principals, superintendent was that we would see more traditional scheduling. We've had good success through the fall season. We've had more opportunity to work with other districts around us and their commitment to being willing to play games and commit to playing. So initially, we would schedule during the regular season with some other school districts that surround us. In most cases, it will be standard just day trips, you know, normal six o'clock game. They go to it, they have the game, they come home. And the teams that participate in this, the, the wintertime are in, in standard a good bit smaller than they are than say a football team. It's just, it's, it's less kids. So anyway, we will also host some one-day events that would include schools from outside our area. An example that I would give you is North Marion High School has the Tim Brinkley Memorial Basketball Event that they put on. There's five schools from Marion County and five schools from outside of Marion County. We have some provisions in place that will keep them separated, the timeframes in between the games. The crowd will rotate throughout the day, so we do have some precautions, but that will be going on.
That's a question.
Yes.
Because when you said it, I, I instantly thought about one of the bigger ones. What about the Kingdom of the Sun Tournament? Are they still, they canceled this this year?
Yes, sir. The Kingdom was canceled this year mainly because of
Right, because I know we have teams from the nation, around the nation coming for that one.
And, and they felt it best, they had talked with the community folks and the longtime supporters and the folks at Vanguard and, and felt that it was best to, to not have it this year.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Overnight travel in winter, one of the things that we will look at as we move a little further into the semester, I know the Superintendent's focus has, has been discussed today, is keeping kids on campus and, you know, the efforts to make sure that all of the new students that are coming, that that is our focus. We don't want to lose sight of that and we don't want to lose any of the momentum that we have gained. But again, I think over the, the Christmas break is a traditional time that, that schools do participate and they usually travel somewhat, so we will hope at that time that we could get consideration from Superintendent on being able, the, the teams to be able to do some of that when there is no school in. And again, just on the digital ticketing, we are hopeful that the district will be able to, that we as a district will have it in place at least by the first of the year for our folks to be able to use on a daily basis. And then as a Plan B, I just want to share with you, if we do get a stoppage or we do what our plan and, and the consensus, again, of all of the groups and committees that met and we dealt with, would be to do something similar and we would fall into place as we did in the fall and we would, we would have more of a local flavor and keep things closer to home, so to speak. The only sport that is a little bit of a problem in the winter is wrestling and we will have to deal with that a little bit differently because that sport has turned more to a tournament environment than it is a dual environment and head-to-head matchups. So just in the sense of the number of teams that we have participating, which are three right now, we will have to have those kids be able to access some things and, and we're, we're working with them on how to do that and even if we move into a Plan B scenario. And then lastly, middle school athletics, the consensus that, that has come there has been to have a full intramural program where students can access athletics after school. Our standard four sports and, and one just finished, cross-country is finished, so there's three listed there. But to finish the year with those three in more of an intramural setting where the kids are more day-to-day, working on campus with the students that they're in school with. And then there is a five-week window where one time during that week with the schools that are in their surrounding area, we have them split five and five, that, that they would be able to have like a scrimmage setting with that one school one time a week. So we're not playing a full-on traveling schedule and competitive schedule with the middle school.
The middle school is girls' basketball, boys' basketball, track?
We just started girls' and boys' volleyball this week.
Okay.
Practices in, in the intramural, that starts this week. After we come back the first of the year, yes, boys' and girls' basketball and then we end the school year with track and field. And we just had the, the cross-country, middle school cross-country championships last Saturday. So that's my update.
And pretty much these kids are gonna, if they're not traveling together, they're spending the night together, going out into the woods, mudding together, they're together. And so with elementary kids, you can maybe keep them a little bit more separated because the parents have to be involved, but these high school boys with vehicles, they're all together anyway. So whether they're traveling to a game together or, they're, they're exposed. These boys are exposed to one another.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any public comment? Any board members, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Dennis McFattin, First Amendment to SRO Agreements.
Good morning, good morning to everyone.
Morning.
Good morning. Back on September 17th, there was some discussion about our, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. Excuse me. This is about the board, you're going to see something on the agenda under items 21.1, 21.2, and 21.3, per Florida State Statute 106.13, Subsection 4. It requires that we have an agreement, an existing agreement with our law enforcement agencies that specifically state that we as a school district, if we have a school board will report any types of violence to them so that it can be handled by our law enforcement community. When we done our SRO contracts, we thought that language was in there. It wasn't in there to the specifics that the state wanted it to. So I reached out to Mr. McCord, Tim McCord, over at the Marion County Sheriff's Office, our legal department, spoke with them and it was a decision that was made that the Sheriff's Office and Bellevue PD would do an agreement to the SRO contract and OPD wanted to do an MOU. So basically what we wanted to do was make sure that you understood that the SRO contract is not being affected at all as far as the cost, the price, the timing of it. But we had to put this language in there that specifies, was very specific that as a school board, as a school district, our school personnel had to notify law enforcement with any threat from a student or an adult that came on the campus. So because of that, we had to go through this whole different way of putting this sort of language in there.
These are basically amendments to the contract.
This is amendment, Bellevue PD Police Department and Marion County Sheriff's Office agreed to do amendments. Oakdale Police Department on a memorandum of understanding. So we just wanted you to understand that so that if once you saw it on the board item there, that it, you knew that it wasn't something that's going to affect the SRO contract.
So for the record, no cost change, no, nothing to our original contract. Our contract with them or anything, it's just basic amendments and MOUs.
Yes, yes, sir, no, no type of cost change, the agreement is still the same. We just had to add that language in there, per Florida State Statute 106, 1006.13, Subsection 4, that we must report any type of acts of violence to law enforcement.
And all services still remain the same?
Yes.
And we have been doing that really anyway all along, it just hasn't, hadn't been that specific.
Exactly, we, we've been doing it for years.
Yep.
Making sure we tell the SRO and law enforcement, it's always been in place, but they wanted something specific in
Formerly in the contract.
In agreement, yes, sir.
Got it.
Any, any comments, Board Members? That was good, Mr. McFattin.
Thank you.
You get the word for being the fastest today.
Your subject must be a little bit boring.
More concerns, Ms. Elena Martinez?
Just two, Board Members, if you would go ahead and bring your laptops in, they have not been updated since pre-COVID. So if you could bring them in on Tuesday, we can go ahead and get those updated for you. And also November 5th, the only item that we had on there was the additional review of district-wide attendance zones and that was just if needed. So beyond that, there's no other topics. We can certainly leave that open because I still have a week to advertise should any topics arise. Just letting you know that that is the only topic for the November 5th work session.
That's unusual.
I know.
Very unusual.
We're used to meeting two or three times a week.
I know.
Are we trying to create something to put on there?
Take a break.
November 5th will be the presentation of data.
Oh, okay, so now we have a topic, so we will have work session, okay?
With one topic.
Unless, unless the board would like to change that date, we certainly can.
That's our QSNR, that's
Yes, correct. And principal presentations from our L300 schools on their strategies. But we could cert, we would certainly entertain changing it if you'd like to do that on another date. Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Attorney Green?
Nothing, thank you.
No concerns, I just want to thank you Board for your support and guidance in doing what's best for our students. Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Nothing.
Ms. Stacy?
We handled it as we went.
Ms. King? Laura?
Just a quick shout-out to the CEP. I attended their meeting yesterday and breakfast and as always, it was wonderful. And a quick shout-out to Ward Highlands Elementary School. They were specifically recognized for their soft skills initiative and their soft skills surround being dependable, reliable, good communicators, positive attitudes, strong work ethic and team players. So that, I can get behind that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Parents that are listening, please know that if you are getting ready to make changes, please contact your schools, let the schools know what your intent are. We heard a very spirited and in-depth conversation about move from MCPS online back to brick and mortar. I just want you to make sure that you do your diligence in making that decision and then also making sure you contact the school so that we can have a smooth, as smooth transitions we can have. With that being said, there being all the business, we're going to adjourn on this meeting at 11:44 a.m. And move straight into our next session.